And get started and Ali and Savian will be joining us shortly. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Thank you to LaFollette for hosting us and to the staff at the district. This is a great sound system for one of our school, um, school meetings. So it's, it's a big step forward in terms of our being able to be out in the community. We only have one public speaker tonight. So Bob Schrefer.
Yep, thank you. And what, uh, I want to make sure that we're addressing as we look at some of the renovations and that is the school's safety and that make sure that, uh, we keep our students safe. Uh, and, and some of the elements of that that have been expressed is making sure that the doors are, are the, the access to the school is limited, uh, that we know when doors are being opened and, uh, perhaps making use of video surveillance at those entrances and exits so that we know what's going on and, and that we can keep our students safe, especially during the time that the school is in session. Understandable that when you have athletic activities and things like that, that some of those doors may have, need to have better access. So, uh, and, and to have that in, in some way or another so that, um, uh, we know who's in the building and whatever safety efforts that we have to take into consideration, uh, to keep that, um, in there. Um, and, and again, uh, those are the thoughts that I have, want to share with you in terms of the renovation aspects that are going to be going with the schools that we, we make sure that safety is a priority.
Thank you. That concludes our public appearances tonight. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes dated April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second, Rebecca, your advisory vote.
How do I do this?
Just say aye or nay.
Aye.
Or abstain. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes five zero. So we have two items on the operations work group agenda for this evening. The first is an update on our referendum planning as well as some of the community input sessions that, um, the administration has been hosting over the fall. And then the second item is our very first discussion for the budget for two thousand twenty, twenty-one. Um, so Chad, do you want to join us and whoever from the team is going to speak to the referendum? So both of these presentations are pretty short and I, we're in a little bit of an awkward setup today. So if we could just hold our comments and questions till the end and we'll pause in between referendum and budget and have a discussion.
Well, thank you for having us tonight. I've got Andrew and Kelly with me as per usual. Uh, we are going to do our best to get through a decent amount of content. We've been busy for the last couple of months and have a lot to share. Uh, so our goals for tonight, uh, we hope to give you a progress update on what we've been up to for the last couple of months as far as community input and feedback. Quite a bit to share there. I've got a, I want to review a strategy with you on how we think if, uh, if we did get to referendum and we did end up passing a referendum, uh, what we believe would be the best way to actually pull these projects off. Um, and then we're going to wrap up with a quick reminder and review of the timeline to two thousand twenty. It feels like we have a quarter click happening there. Any idea?
There are also copies. There are also copies if anyone wants physical copies.
You don't want to miss the good stuff at the bottom.
Yeah, that's right. So we just wanted to do a few quick reminder slides. It's been a, a little bit since we've been in front of the board on essentially what we've been out, uh, in the community getting feedback on and talking about. Uh, so it, uh, two big pieces. One, uh, is the facilities ask that we've broken down into really just three pieces of work. Uh, one, seventy million dollar, potential seventy million dollar reinvestment at each of our four high school sites. A second, a possible consolidation of Capital High School, uh, potentially moving it to the Hoyt Building and a third possible South Side Elementary School. Um, this has been a slide that Kelly, Andrew and I are becoming all too familiar with in terms of all of the input sessions we've been part of. The second piece that we've also been going around and asking for feedback on is the possibility of an operating referendum with permission to exceed that tax limit that will run out this coming year. Um, and we've been certainly taking feedback on the possibility of an eight million dollar lift for two years and then a ten million dollar lift, uh, those following two years as well. Um, we've been talking through the taxpayers, both a hundred thousand dollar impact, uh, and the impact on a, an average home of just under three hundred thousand dollars. Um, I didn't want to spend too much time reviewing it because you guys have seen these slides a ton. Um, I want to make sure we had time for Andrew to talk us through what we've heard from the community so far.
Thanks, Chen. Yeah, I am, uh, excited and pretty happy to be reporting out on some great work that's been happening. Uh, great in that it's good quality and also great in that it's been a lot. Uh, it's been a great deal of it. It has been a really great combined effort. So the board signed off, for example, on our input plan in August and we've been busy implementing that with very few changes. We've made great progress, still a lot to do, but we've made great progress on that plan. Also, the research and program evaluation office handling a lot of the logistics and capturing of, uh, input sessions. Uh, I'd also like to introduce Orianna Eversole who's, uh, in the audience behind us. It's her team and her personally that's pushed a lot of these, uh, sessions forward and captured a lot of this evidence. Also, we've had some of our referendum leaders in its sessions offering their perspectives and their expertise. We've had communications offering, uh, assistance with the execution and videotaping and recording as needed. Um, OMGE providing access for language supports as well as a lot of support from within the walls of MMSD, but then also out in the community. So lots and lots of players have been at it so far. So this is the, uh, kind of the halftime report. You want to keep it informal. So this is, uh, like literally about halfway through all of our input sessions and we wanted to pause, let you know what we've been finding so far. Um, good to know, I mean, we'll walk through this, but we're not seeing at this point any major red flags that would cause you to shift course. It's a good idea to just pause once in a while and make sure you head in the right direction. So there's a lot that still needs to be learned and we can highlight some of that. But really, uh, we're encouraged by what we're seeing and the rest of my time talking to you is just to let you know kind of refresher on what we had planned, what we've done so far, what we've learned and then what's next. So. So back in August, the board signed off on our input plan and the, the spirit of this was to build awareness out in the community of our current thinking around the referendums, uh, both the operating and the, and the facilities referendum. Collect feedback from the community and the purpose of that then is to help inform board decisions to make sure that what we're doing is aligned to the community's priorities and values. So what we've gone out seeking then input on the four comprehensive high school renovations, the potential for an elementary school in the Rimrock Road area, moving Capital High to a more central location as well as then the operating referendum. If you need a copy of the plan, it is attached to the report today and, uh, it's really largely unchanged. I think we've expanded some of our timelines to allow for those sessions to happen in December. Generally though, the plan is as you'd seen it earlier. So for our current status, um, we've really kept pace with, uh, where we expected to be. We extended some timelines as I described. We've engaged in a few different strategies, a few different methods of collecting input. So we've got targeted sessions that are really intended to, to seek out, um, interest at a particular geographic or, uh, social, um, area. Open sessions, kind of the, the all call, anyone who'd like to come can, so those are hosted our four conventional high schools. And then more informal informational sessions. So still taking the word out to folks that are out in the community, letting them know what our thinking is. And so far, as of the eighth, when we kind of closed the gate to do the analysis for you today, we've gotten eleven targeted community input sessions, four open, uh, community input sessions and sixteen informational sessions as well as a bunch of one-on-ones too. So folks who have a tap into the community, um, people of expertise, we've been hitting them up as individuals as well. So our emphasis has really been around authentic input. So if all we did were open sessions, you would get a pretty good idea of a general trend, but we're also engaging then in targeted sessions that are helping to reduce barriers for people's participation. So we've been offering language supports, uh, for both Spanish and Hmong. We've been offering food, transportation, childcare to really take some of those barriers down and make sure that we're hearing from folks and then elevating those voices so we hear overall trends, but then also highlights. Do you want to call out then also the Equity by Design team? So Ned Miller's team has helped us a lot with planning, design, delivery, um, and execution of those sessions in a, in a really positive way. So our prelim analysis, kind of the halftime report, um, again, not seeing any major red flags, but we've covered a lot of territory to get to, to get to that point. So you can have an idea here of the types of sessions. So for example, our targeted sessions hosted at New West Raimondo or with Alice staff, that kind of thing. We've kept a tally of, uh, participants as well as the sessions. So so far, hearing from almost three hundred and seventy-five individuals as well as a hundred and thirty-two, uh, feedback forms. So there's a, a bit more detail in the report too about where we've been so far. And generally the findings, uh, we're finding largely positive support for both referendum. Um, there is satisfaction with the way that we're going about this, the openness, the amount of communication that we engaged in, so it's encouraging. Um, but given the size and the financial impact of these two referendum together, we really do hear from folks that, that we want to provide the highest level of transparency in terms of what we're doing, how we're doing it, how we're spending the money. It's a very high level of accountability we're also hearing from the community about. On the operating referendum, we have relatively limited feedback or comparatively little. Um, so especially comparatively, if you think about it, the amount of feedback we've found so far around the facilities referendum, very, very large and not surprising. It's very easy to see that a building needs renovation. It's very easy to see that it's been a delay since we've made a major investment. It's also very tangible, tactile. You walk into the place and you kind of get a feel for it. Operating on the other hand, it is really about, um, more abstract concepts such as workforce retention, um, benefits, salary, classroom ratios, those kinds of things. So a bit more work to do around the operating side and we believe that our survey is going to help, um, help with that understanding. I do want to flag since we're on the survey that we're not offering any, um, survey, uh, halftime report because that has really just started in earnest. So we'll have a full report on survey input in the January two thousand twenty sit down. The possibility for a new elementary in the Rimrock Road area is very exciting. So we're hearing a lot of strong support for yes, some sort of school down there. They're recognizing accessibility issues, proximity issues, and it's a real critical need that folks in that immediate community as well as outside are, are aligning to. Uh, the concerns that have been raised so far have been around, uh, one around segregation. Um, though I would like to flag that our current proposal is to take the entire attendance area for Alice, if it is an Alice school, and then have that in the Rimrock location. Or if it is a New West Raimondo school, then again, similar boundaries. So it's, it's a flag that's been raised, but it's one that if all things are equal would be the same amount of, um, income distribution, uh, race ethnic distribution, that kind of thing that we have today in both of those two schools. But to make a decision around which version of a school ends up in the Rimrock area, we've got some more work to do to, to engage the community around programming. And one of those opportunities is coming up this Thursday. For Capital High, there's, uh, quite a bit of support for unifying the two schools. Um, the concerns that have come up are really around, yes, you could probably provide better services for those students at a combined location, but isn't it not quite as central as we would like and aren't there going to be transportation issues? And then other concerns that have been surfaced so far is around the Hoyt area. So what's the interaction of the school with the park or the school with the neighboring community? For the four conventional high schools, a lot of strong support. Uh, again, it's a, it's a very, uh, apparent need, so it's, it's very kind of clear perceptions around the need to reinvest in our high schools. Um, a lot of key priorities coming up largely around sustainability, um, Title IX considerations, all gender, um, accommodations, those kinds of things. One question that we heard from the community was if you're thinking about seventy million per building, should you think about it differently? Which is kind of implying, aren't there greater needs at some schools than others? And shouldn't it be a more needs-based approach? Um, I would say that seventy million per school, based on all of the documentation we've gotten so far is not a, not needs-based approach. So there might be some more communication and perspectives we can share around how seventy million each came about. So then for next steps, um, still looking at the schedule and have scheduled twenty-six different sessions. We still have our survey. Uh, that came out as a soft launch last month in October, a formal launch then in early November and that'll go for almost a full month exactly, um, in ending in then December five with those results being summarized for the January meeting. So what we've got then, uh, a bit more digging around the operating referendum to ensure that, uh, folks understand what we're thinking about and where we're headed. A little bit more on Capital High in terms of the context surrounding the Hoyt Building and then, uh, more on the programming of any potential school in the Rimrock Road area. I'll turn it back over to Chad.
Kate, do we want to pause for questions there before we dive into this or not?
Yeah, sure. So the, so the next, so there's sort of two pieces within this just to give everyone context. The first is just an update on, um, the kind of feedback sessions thus far and then the second is a little bit on more tactically, how do we actually get the work done? So it's a good pausing point. Yeah.
I've heard from a few people, there've been some question, sorry. Let me start off. I heard from a few people that there may be some questions on open enrollment if there is a new elementary school and that they were confused on how that process would work. Do we, would it work like any others, any other open enrollment plan or would it, would there be unique differences?
Yeah, I would say it would, it would function like any, uh, school would, uh, for the state open enrollment program or for our own internal transfers and our other placement decisions. I would think the only difference would be in the short term, you'd want to make sure that your market, the folks living in the neighborhood have actually taken advantage of the space. So you then have a better idea of whether or not you're opening up your doors to other districts or other corners of MMSD and then not allowing families to have the access that they would need. So we would want to be cautious in the first couple of years just to make sure that we're not exceeding capacity or limiting opportunities for families in the neighborhood.
Ananda, did you have?
No, I just need everyone in the other side to like talk a little louder.
Yeah. Okay, we'll talk louder. Yeah, Chris.
So I have a few questions. Um, first of all, just a process suggestion. Um, as a board member, like I realize today is just kind of the halftime check-in, but, um, I've been trying to think through like, what are the big questions that I as a board member need answered before I can actually vote on a referendum question or two referendum questions? And I think it would actually be really helpful if all of us sat down and wrote out those questions and got them to you fairly soon so that you're able to focus on things that we're thinking about in, um, future presentations, just so that things go smoothly as we move towards a vote.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there's questions that clearly don't need to be answered until after we pass it, like details about construction, but I think there are some big questions about, um, like which school is going to go into the new Rimrock school area if we decide to build that area. Um, I'm actually, would like to know a lot more about transportation plans for Hoyt before we move forward with that school because I am concerned that we could have a beautiful new high school that Metro doesn't go to. Um, and that could be problematic. So I think it would just be helpful to get some of those questions answered publicly as we move along and possibly in January, just so that things go smoothly.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, let's see. Um, I was curious, um, where you were at with the community and technical advisory groups for the referendum? Those were mentioned, I think, in the longer piece and has any movement happened towards forming those groups?
I will comment that, um, at, based on board feedback, we did combine them into one advisory group.
Okay.
However, these two have been driving that process a bit more, so I'll hand it over to Chad first for comment.
Yeah, so as you can imagine, uh, the, the folks that we've been inviting have busy schedules and have taken, uh, multiple one-on-one meetings just to make sure we catch people up to speed, uh, as we go forward with a, a formal invite. So, uh, we actually were just having a discussion before the meeting started on three other folks who agreed to be part of the committee. So right now, we have everybody on board who's agreed to do it. Um, we're working on scheduling our first meeting. Um, I guarantee we'll have the first meeting, uh, off the ground by the time we get to you in January, most likely two meetings by the time we see you in January. So things are in really good shape. We're really excited about the group of folks who have agreed to do it.
Are these going to be open meetings or not? I know then, the committee wasn't formed by the board, so I don't know if they have to be, but.
Our vision at this point is this is a committee that's advising us around the feedback that we receive, in particular as it might mean how we prepare for you in January. So what moves we need to take to get ready to answer your questions and to respond to the community feedback. Um, at the kind of point that the board may want to start, kind of your own advisory group or some other advisory group gets created, our vision is that this might get handed over, um, to you or to other, um, entities that may start up. Um, and we've kind of foreshadowed that with the folks that for the first couple of months is probably internal work with us to help evaluate what we're hearing, interpret it like we a focus group would. Um, but we do kind of recognize and have acknowledged with them that there may be a second part of this work which moves into a more public facing, um, group.
One thing that I heard at a couple of the, um, bigger meetings at the high schools was is there any role for, um, private fundraising in covering some of the costs of the, the high school renovations in particular? The feedback I got was that fine arts and sports might be things that people would actually want to fund if we give them the opportunity and are you guys thinking along those lines at all?
Yeah, we are. Um, we, I, we have a couple of conversations in particular going with West and Memorial, uh, onsite folks already. Um, I think Kelly actually had a meeting with FMPS, maybe even today, um, that we believe they could be a partner for some of that. Um, we don't necessarily have, uh, you know, a pull tab, here's a ten million dollar project ready to go. Um, but, um, we've, we've starting those conversations with several folks already and believe that, um, there's, there's some promise there.
Do you think there's a chance that as we prepare an actual dollar amount to go to referendum that we could have a conversation about like, we think maybe we could commit to raising a million of this through private donations or something or would we be ready to do that by spring?
That's a little bit out of my wheelhouse, um, but I don't know, Kelly, maybe have a little better idea?
So the way we've been envisioning it is much similar to the way the East Theater worked, which is that this particular plan, um, really holds on a lot of dominoes, right? For the, these high school strategies to work together, that this would be kind of the referendum package and then the fundraising would be in addition to. So, uh, at East Theater, the way this worked is we funded the base work of the theater and then the community fundraised for the extra pieces to make the theater that much better. And that's kind of the way we've been envisioning the work because what we can't do is, um, kind of gamble the entire referendum, um, process on raising one million dollars and keep everything on hold until that money's fundraised. So what we've been thinking of, what is the base of the facility plan that we need that you all would vote on? And you guys get the opportunity to go up or down in that number, you know, in the January through April timeline if you want. Um, then the idea is above and beyond that, what would the community fundraise to make it even better?
Okay, um, just a couple more questions. Um, and these are mostly just because I'm a new board member and I'm a little confused about the tax impact of the, um, capital referendum. I get the operating referendum, but the capital referendum are taking out a twenty-year bond, correct? And it's roughly two hundred dollars a year for an average household in Madison. Is that cumulative like the, um, operating referendum is or is it just like your taxes go up two hundred dollars one year and then they just stay that amount up?
Right, so it's a twenty-year bond, so you pay it down over time. Um, and the two hundred dollars is kind of looking at the next four years, um, which is when you would make the majority of your payments because you want to pay it off early to keep interest rates low. Um, so over time, it absolutely decreases and by the time you hit your twenty, it's completely off the books. Um, when we've been saying on average two hundred dollars a year, it's kind of looking at the next four years.
And that, would there be charges beyond that or is that really the bulk of it is happening in the next four years? The cost to taxpayers?
So theoretically, the large bulk is over the next four years. The board has not had the discussion.
Right.
On financing packages yet, which is why we're not in a whole ton of detail on finances on these sides. We're looking for feedback on general numbers on average. How does two hundred dollars, you know, a year feel? That's our, our feedback question. When we get into the kind of next phase of work, which is that February, March timeline, you all are going to have to make, to make decisions on the financing structure. That will include, how much do you want to pay off on the front end, which means property taxes are higher on the front end, um, versus pushing it off into the future, which you can do, you just pay higher interest rates. So those are detailed conversations that we've not been in that granular level of work because first we need to know, are you at the three hundred and fifteen million? When I know you're at three hundred and fifteen million, we can start talking about different financing plans that affect specific dollar amounts. Those decisions then lead into the information part of this process once you've decided on the total dollar amount.
Thanks, that's really helpful and I'm done.
Uh, I greatly appreciate your work and leadership on this. I am curious in terms of the operating referendum, uh, how I guess oriented people are to what the operating referendum that we currently have is doing and how that informs people's enthusiasm about supporting the next operating referendum?
I think one of the challenges that we have is that there's essentially seven projects on this potential referendum discussion. Um, and so as we're in the feedback phase, trying to talk about what is kind of seven different items and granted their package is a two-question, but there's seven different items. And the timeline that you get to hold people's attention to actually get feedback, right? So we have about twenty minutes in any given presentation to cover seven topics. So I think it's been kind of a challenge to talk about any, everything from the past and everything from the future and that's part of what we've all been kind of reflecting on and talking about. You know, most school districts probably have two, um, particular topics to talk about when they're going to referendum. So I think this is a little bit what we're, what we're challenging with. So no, we have not had a ton of conversation about, you know, what the last, uh, you know, twenty-two million dollars that is in our base now kind of would have gone to.
Do we anticipate kind of orientating folks to how we've used this funding before and how we plan to use it or continue to use it in the future and so that folks have kind of this clear narrative of the necessity of these referendums? And is that awareness something we can tap into in communicating with the community right now, which I think you're saying is yes, but because.
Yeah, we have these constraints to that, right? Like airtime in general. Um, so part of the intention of the feedback phase is to capture like what are the questions? What are the talking points for the future? And so I think these are exactly the type of things that are probably coming up in Andrew's kind of feedback process, um, that we'll be continuing to analyze and will likely be part of a kind of January through March phase of work. Um, but that, you know, we're already starting to, to filter in.
Do we have a specific approach to connecting the dots for folks between the two?
Between facilities and operating?
No, between the current operating and the upcoming operating.
Yeah, so our general talking points and, um, for those who have been at some of the sessions, I make connections between the twenty sixteen operating referendum and the future referendum, kind of why we needed the past one, um, high level, you know, what we did with it and then in moving forward, what we need and why for it. So I'm, I'm absolutely trying to make those connections. We just have limited kind of talking points at this point and so we're trying to remain focused to things that'll help us get feedback. Thank you very much.
Um, so, um, I, you know, I've been out, I've been to a few of these community engagement sessions and you guys have done a fabulous job, all right? I'm just so impressed at all the work and vision, um, in taking this into, um, our community. Um, I want to make sure that we are reaching as many people as we can and, um, I'm just concerned that we're not getting as much, um, engagement, right? People coming to, uh, the schools, for instance, and I think for me, once it hits, um, the board, um, that we get, um, sort of where are the gaps? Like who are we hearing from, who are we not? Um, so that we can, um, strategize amongst the board on, um, really being creative on who we reach out to. I think, um, it's, that's always a problem, right? I mean, when we want to do community engagement, um, we, we follow best practice and, um, we go through the movements, but oftentimes it's just really hard to get people to come to a meeting. Um, in reality, people are just, you know, overworked and they have a lot of things going on and so the people that we are really trying to engage are not able to come. And so, um, I think that would be helpful for us, um, at the end of here before we even, um, before we get it to us, if you can make some recommendations to us of where, you know, where the gaps are. I think that would be helpful. And if you see of any, anything right now, um, I think that would be helpful too, right? So that we can start thinking about where we need to engage.
Oh, I think Ananda might have been before me.
So thank you for all of this. I, the only thing that I want to make sure that this is on record and I'm struggling a little bit with the screen, uh, so close to me, but on the slide, which I think is slide twelve, um, that talks about some concerns about the Hoyt Park and the neighborhoods, it, to me, it sounded like racialized language and I know that it's not something that you made up. Um, we've been receiving that. I just. I just wanted to make a public comment on record that that is not something that I will tolerate personally, racialized language to talk about our children, our students, and our families.
Two things. One, on getting more people involved, I think one of the first steps, I like the new video, the new sound system for individuals who have hearing issues, I think that's huge, and I really appreciate that. And the other thing that I was going to say is, can we just have like a quick one-pager on what we used the 2016 referendum for? I think it'd just be an easier way to do it, because obviously, you can't do it on the new one yet, but at least people could see what it was originally used for.
So absolutely, I can, we're start working on that for you. I just want to be a little clear that we get new money from the revenue limit, or from the feds, and we have referendum authority. There's no board action that's taken regarding which money goes where. So we certainly can pull from the budget book to create a one-pager about what new investments we've made since 2016, but tying one thing to the referendum versus any other new dollar is what's pretty hard to do.
Yeah, no, just what we've done in the past, not tying it to the new.
Hi, I was wondering, you mentioned like a survey. What are you doing to make that like accessible to students? Like, are you emailing it to students? Are you having them like fill it out in classes, or what's the plan with that?
So the survey has gone out to families and staff, but it has not gone out to the present through that seminar, so.
Yeah, so with coverage out to families and staff, we can take a look at students.
I sent it out to student senate, I know I said that.
Yeah, yeah, some copies have gone out, but we'll, we'll talk about that one. Thank you.
Any other comments before we keep going? All right.
Okay, so you'll have to bear with me, I'm going to try to keep this, this is going to be a fairly technical discussion, but I'm going to try to keep it in layman's terms the best I can. We are to the point in this process where I believe we have the momentum that it's more likely than not, something, facilities ends up on a 2020 referendum ballot, and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page on the way, at least we believe would be the best way to carry out these projects if they were to happen. And bear with me and certainly ask questions along the way. So if we were to pass a large referendum in 2020, potentially at six different sites at this point, in my mind, some non-negotiables that would have to come along for the ride after that referendum passed, is the fact that the budget, the projects would have to end up on budget. If we passed a $315 million referendum, you guys wouldn't want to see me coming back to you saying, I'm 10 million short, help me out. The budget, these would have to be on time. We would have to deliver these in the way that we've promised all along with, even right now, in terms of the feedback we're taking. And they'd also have to deliver in terms of the scope and quality of the projects that we're promising. So we couldn't insurb on them and say, we ran out of money, we're not doing Hoyt. We ran out of money, nope, this part of the Lefalit project had to be left behind. So those are some non-negotiables I think we can all agree on. There are certain ways to carry out large school construction projects. The board's probably most familiar with, because this is how we've done them for the last 100 years, the premise of design it, send it out to bid, and then build it. So I think that the best way to explain this is even on a small scale. We just redid the cafeteria at Shank Whitehorse, and you all approved that project for $400,000 and change, and that was a hard bid project, where we designed a very detailed bid specification. We took a competitive bid, three contractors bid on it, we awarded it to the lower bidder, and we built it. There were some hiccups that came along for the ride, very small ones, but we were able to handle them. That's design, bid, build, which we've done all along for school construction. A second possible way, which is actually, many of the neighboring districts are utilizing this methodology to build some of their large school construction projects, is yet the idea of design-build with a single construction manager. And this is a process where, kind of at this point, pre-referendum, you may already name your builder. You could name a large builder that would come on to the facilities, design, and capital team, and work with you on a budget, and they would self-perform much of the work. Many of the large players in the area are building high school projects like that right now. We'll get into a little more detail there in a second. And the last one, which I'm going to recommend to all of you tonight, is the idea of hiring a construction manager, which would inherit some of the risk, and they would act as a constructor. So to go into a little bit of detail, which I just mentioned, kind of that scenario of White Horse, the White Horse Cafeteria. We're very familiar with the process of design it, bid it, and build it. You get to award the contract and say, yep, thumbs up, it's on budget, and we have funding for it. There are some pros to that. We've been doing it all along. This is the way the board and the district's done business forever. There's the potential of cost savings. If you make a very, very detailed and tight plan set, there's, there's very little wiggle room for a contractor, and you kind of know what you're paying for, and it's a cleaner process with fewer people involved. There can be some cons, especially on large-scale construction projects. Schedules can come into play, where you may only have an owner and an architect that can really push on a contractor to stay on schedule. The biggest one I'm here to talk to you tonight is this idea of budget. So on small-scale construction projects, the White Horse Cafeteria, we run into the flooring, there's a steam tunnel under the flooring that we have to make an accommodation for, and the contractor tells us it's a $10,000 change order. So there are ways in that project to value engineer and bring the project back on budget, things that none of you ever hear about, that it's doable on small-scale construction projects. Change orders can be a big deal when you're dealing with $70 million projects at a site, and sometimes can run out of control. I'm also concerned about the prospect of having multiple general contractors running all of these projects. If we awarded five or six general contractors overseeing five or six different sites, there's concerns I have there. Main thing I'm concerned about is budget and schedule. Another method, which is, which is actually more Dane County schools are taking on, is the idea of a design-build process. That's where a team of designers, a single contractor, they're awarded the entire project upfront, before the referendum. If it passes, it's going to be awarded to this contractor, and they are allowed to self-perform work. So some of the big local contractors, they can do the masonry work, they can do a lot of the construction work, and they're allowed to do the work, and in theory, have an open books in terms of how much that costs. So there is a turnkey aspect to that process that is appealing to many school boards and many business directors. In my mind, there are cons to that process, one being there are lots of ways for that contractor to hide costs through the projects, and with $300 million of work, I believe that's possible. And there's also the perception, if I were here tonight to tell you, I've got a general contractor for you, and you guys sign them up, $300 million of work, if this were to pass, I think that may be a little hard to stomach on the front end, that we went through an RFP process, not even RFB process, and have already handed the work out to a contractor So I'm here tonight to talk about a third possibility involving a construction manager that would oversee and lead these construction projects from beginning to end. They'd be responsible for keeping schedules, monitoring finances, coordinating the bidding process, and making certain that everyone's on task every single day. Construction managers can self-perform work, but I'm actually here tonight to talk to you about having a construction manager on our team that would not be allowed to perform any of their own work. So there are pros to this process. One being, as early as this January, we could sign a construction manager onto the team that would begin to detail our budget and work with our design team to make sure that what we are starting to shop around with the public is doable in terms of the budget we've got. And we would actually sign a guaranteed maximum price that this contractor would inherit much of the risk. If the project went over budget, every time the design team, the owner, and the construction manager got together and changed scope, we'd all agree that, yep, we're still on budget. And we'd have a construction manager that would agree that if the thing goes over budget, they pay for it. So we wouldn't, we would, we would not inherit any of the risk of having a really high-risk bid day, where you open up the envelope and you're like, oops, we're 10 million over, what are we going to do now? They would be huge in terms of pre-construction cost estimating. So right now, our design team, and they're good at it, but they're not as good as construction managers, they're the ones helping us with designing these and giving some cost estimating. If we brought a construction manager onto our team before the referendum, we're bringing a contractor that actually has experience building these projects, that can really help us make sure that we're on budget pre-referendum. They will give us very valuable feedback in terms of the constructability of all of these projects, and may, may help us through the entire design phase, make these projects more efficient in their design, and they're going to be huge in terms of coordinating and scheduling at all these projects. So, you know, taking Lefalit High School, for example, we have very little new square footage we are recommending as part of these projects, and a lot of the construction's going to be necessary during the school year, which will take incredible coordination and scheduling, when you have 1,600 students and 200 staff members show up here every day, and we're going to have an active construction site, and a construction manager can be huge in terms of helping coordinate that. There are some cons to this process. One, we will inherit some pre-referendum fees. We won't know what those are until we receive the RFP back, and there are, in theory, some added management fees during construction. But in my mind, I actually think much of the management fees you can make up for with efficiencies in the design process by having an actual constructor on your team before you send these projects out to bid. And then I want to take questions. I want you guys to pick this apart a little bit for me and see if you have, if you've got questions. So here's what we're proposing, and there's an ad in the paper to do so right now. We're proposing we release an RFP for a construction manager that would have the following qualifications. One, intense experience in a K-12 environment doing construction projects of this size, and this is a sizable ask. Two, through the RFP, they will agree to a set percentage of the cost of construction fees to carry out this work. So we are paying for essentially two things, kind of white-collar expertise. We are, we're paying for folks that know how to build schools. We're also paying for something called general requirements or general conditions. A construction manager will need to provide things like job trailers, barriers during construction, fencing outside, temporary heat, temporary electricity. All of that is baked into a percentage fee that they're going to respond to RFP on. They will have to agree to a guaranteed max price, so we know these things will not go over budget, we won't have any surprises for the school board. This is a big one. They are going to agree to open access to sealed bids. So if I can play this out for you, if we take the Lefalit project and we design $70 million in work, the construction manager will have some contingency built into that design and their budget, and we will put together an entire bid package for Lefalit High School. Let's pretend it's still $70 million. On bid day, they will open up all of the bid packages for all of the subcontractors that will carry out all the work. So you'll have a bid package that will have the electrical contractors, all bid on the projects, will have an open bid process, just like you are all familiar with, and will get a line for electrical. There'll be a bid package for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. Boom, line for mechanical engineering and plumbing, and so forth, that they'll put together a total package that will be on budget, or they will have to pay the difference. We will not allow them to carry out any self-performed work. So many of these folks have masonry or other, other parts of general construction, carpentry, that at this point, we'd like an open bidding process and not just hand the work over to a single contractor, and they'll, they'll agree to a preset amount of fees to carry out all of this work. And then we're going to take some questions. So, yeah, one more slide, and then we're good to go, Nikki. So I'm hoping, by the time we get to January, we've really rounded out a facilities planning and capital planning team, and we've got all the right players at, at the table, because these are high stakes with, with high-dollar-figure projects. So you've got our MMSD core planning team, Kelly already has a financial advisor on board, we've got a realtor on board that all of you have met, Andrew works closely with Vandewell on projections and municipality coordination, we have a legal consult that actually helped us write the RFP, we've got architects and designers on board, and I'm here tonight to recommend that we bring a construction manager onboard pre-referendum, and then post-referendum once we build these projects. Timelines as follows, release an RFP this November, do interviews, answer questions, do building tours in the month of December, and award through the consent process a contract for a construction manager as early as January, potentially at the regular board meeting.
One question, one comment. The question is, how did we put an ad out for a construction manager before the board has decided whether or not we're going to hire a construction manager?
Yeah, so we do that all the time. I put ads in the paper all the time to bid out projects and then send the bids to you once we've, once we've awarded them. So I'm certainly here tonight to take feedback on that, but we would not award anything until the board's signed off on it. So the RFP, we've been working on the RFP for a while, and if the board at any time decided that they were uncomfortable with this method, we wouldn't do it. At this point, it's just, it's just an ad in the paper.
My second question, sorry, I have one, I have one more to further that comment. I'm not comfortable, but I don't speak for the board, I just speak for me. But the second issue, and my question is, is that I, the first, what we've always done, or even the construction manager I could get behind, is the giving everything upfront that I think we keep hearing about transparency on every survey there is. I'm afraid if we do that and award the contract ahead of time like that, the public is going to say, this is just another example of, of the school district not being transparent. I worry about that, that's my only concern.
And that's why I wanted to differentiate between a design-build firm, which would be awarding the entire contract, you're building all of these projects on your own as a single construction entity. That, there's a difference from what I'm recommending. I'm just recommending a management firm that would take this on, and then we would have all of the projects competitively bid. So we'd follow School Board Policy 5000 to a T. Local, union would still have a foot in the door, and all of these would be open bid, so when we, when we awarded it, we would, we'd, we'd lay out the subcontractors that would be doing all the work. There's a chance a different electrical company does, does all five projects. There's a chance different masons do five or six different projects around town. So it would, we would not be awarding it to one contractor, that's, to be clear about that. We'd be awarding a portion, a very small portion of the project to a construction manager, which, which would help us manage it.
So first, thank you for making this extremely accessible. I feel like I just learned a ton in this last, I don't know, five minutes that you just blew my mind. So I really appreciate that. So I have one technical question, and then a couple of more specifics to some of the things you mentioned. You mentioned the, the open bid process. Does the, who makes the decision of who wins the bid, and is it, I was still following the lowest bidder?
It doesn't always necessarily have to fall to the lowest bidder. So we, School Board Policy 5000 says that we, I think 95% of the time, award to the lowest bidder. If we've had, if we, number one, don't believe the low bidder can carry out the work, we can, we can deny them. Two, if we believe there's an error in the bid, so they just misread the bid spec altogether, and they're a million dollars off, there are times you can throw the bid out as well. But 95% of the time, it would go to the lowest bidder, as long as they're qualified to do the work.
And the group that selects the bidder, is the core, is that the core team?
It would be, yep. But, but then, but we, then we still write it up as a consent memo and send it to the school board. So you guys would probably see, you know, April of 2022, a consent memo that would go through to, if we stayed at $70 million, to award the following work to the following subcontractors for a specific subcontractors for a specific site.
So I'll say this, I'm the person that will always be excited for anything different than we have done 100 years because we know the results that we have. So the, couple of other additional questions that I had is how is this process could potentially increase the contracts to go to people of color, own business, business owned by people of color or women, also known as minority-owned business? And/or also potentially expand our way to infuse sustainability, like environmental sustainability components that we have sort of talked about prior or before?
Okay, so it's a two-parter. One, the RFP that we sent out does actually give preferential points to historically, you know, kind of underutilized businesses or minority-owned businesses. And then the, the same is true of the hard bid process, that we, we would, if there's a, if, if we have the right, if there's a historically underutilized business that bids on any of the sub-work, to actually use them, even if they cost a little bit more, we have the right to do that. And then I actually think the construction manager will be vital in us building energy efficiencies into these projects. So by bringing not only, you know, we're, we're bringing someone who is, who's most likely building K-12 sites somewhere in southern Wisconsin onto our team during the design process. So there, there's K-12 construction happening all the way around the border of Dane County. Odds are, one of the, one of those folks is involved in those projects and would be adding expertise to our team.
So last was, you had asked us to look at the previous slide around RFP. And I, I saw your first bullet, having experience with K-12 construction site. I'm not disagreeing with that, but to me, what is more important is that they have experience actually creating buildings that actually reflect, reflect the community, that they're accessible, that they inspire people to be in, that they inspire the community to be part of it and then to own it. I think to me, that's like more important than the amount of experience that they have. And I, I know we have said, you know, you heard from me this before, but like, also like the, how do we bring art to the buildings that we have? I think that's also important to me. So thank you again.
Thank you.
So, um, so my question, what really was what Ananda had asked, was small business owners and minority-owned businesses and how we're going to write that into the bid so that we are proactive in getting those smaller businesses and women and minority-owned businesses onboard to do this work.
Noted, and we will.
And then I think the experience with the K-12 construction may eliminate that, right? That may cause, I mean, I think that not only for the construction manager, right? I think that, that just sort of triggers something that, you know, in the past, we may not have. It may be somebody who, who has experience working for a smaller construction company or a woman minority-owned. So I think that might cause some barriers. So if we can just reword that a little bit, I think Ananda had some really good language to put into that. And, no, I, I, I'm really in support of this. This is not something I was thinking about. So I'm glad you're putting it forth to us. I think this is something that would help the team in a good addition to the team that you have.
Thank you.
Oh, you know what? I did have a cost question. Did you talk about cost?
Yeah, we won't know until we get the RFP back. We're guessing, I'm guessing somewhere under 2% of the overall cost of construction.
Okay.
And like I said, I actually think you can make up a lot of that 2% by having them on the design team early. There are many factors for them to have kind of a pulse on the bidding environment in Dane County and in southern Wisconsin that will help us in terms of even the timing of releasing bid packages, you name it, buying construction material in bulk. There are just tons of things. Even when you're designing projects, there'd be like, we just built a hospital and did this in a bathroom. Why are you guys designing it like this? Do it like this, it's cheaper and better. So there, yeah, there'll be a percentage of the cost of construction. We won't know until we get the RFP back. But, yeah, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 2% or lower.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. This is a really good idea and share similar concerns and comments and desires as Ananda and Gloria do about having minority-owned businesses. I'm wondering if we can take it a step further to, you know, stipulate that, you know, these jobs will pay a living wage or that, you know, we give opportunities to folks who have had interaction with the criminal justice system, but, you know, the types of folks that we want to hire to perform the work as well.
Noted, thank you.
So I just had a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for helping us think more broadly about ways that we can approach this huge project if, should the referendum pass. I just, you know, I was trying to wrap my head around, and you can probably explain this better, like the need to have a construction manager onboard two and a half years before construction actually starts. That seems like a really long time to me as a non-construction person, so I just wondered if you could talk about that a little more.
Yeah, so in, in my opinion, we may even be a little late to the game with this proposal. But it's, it's very common in, in other districts that do design-build work, when this goes, you may have a construction manager at the table with us tonight talking about these projects. It's certainly not the way we do business in Madison. So I think it's a necessity to bring them on before the referendum, mainly for the, their value in terms of cost estimating. That architects do a lot of work on a square foot basis in terms of what they're seeing in the industry. But a construction manager, they're building it every day and would be able to tell us, hey, you guys are only at $64 million at La Follette. You could add $8 million in scope. Or whoa, you've overpromised a little bit and you might need to dial it back. So for, for us to bring someone on early, at, what I'm guessing is going to be a pretty low cost. Most of these folks are, are just as interested in, as we are in having the referendum pass and would be on the design team to make sure we're getting it right and probably do it at a pretty low rate. They're really interested in, in capitalizing on the construction fees afterwards, not necessarily the hourly rate they charge us ahead of time.
So just to get kind of technical about payment, I'm assuming this would get paid out of the referendum.
It would.
Pre-referendum work would come out of the general fund? How would that get paid?
Yeah, so we've got money set aside for design fees out of my local budget. Kelly also has professional service fees set aside in the budget to start the year. So it'd be paid there.
And then I want to agree with everything that's been said about trying to hire minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses, small businesses, living wages. One thing that I would like to capture, if we move away from language about K-12 experience, is that I think there is a safety piece with understanding how to manage large numbers of children in a building that is under construction. So if we took out the language about K-12, I would still want to make sure that safety in children is an integral part of whoever we hire, that they have experience managing children safely in a building that is being worked on. And there could be toxic fumes, there could be all kinds of dangers, so.
Next to a hospital, I can't think of a, a spot that is more difficult and technical to work on while folks are in it. So without a doubt.
So I'm, thank you, first of all, for all of the work that you're doing on this. I, I'm very supportive of bringing someone on early to support the work and to make sure that we're doing our due diligence ahead of time. Just a couple of questions on how it will work and why we landed on this option versus some version of option two.
Yep.
Is, would this person subcontract out to all of the subsequent bids? Like, is this actually our one point of contact?
They are.
And that's, that's how they therefore have a guaranteed max price?
Correct, yeah. So they, they act essentially as a general contractor.
Okay.
But you're not allowing them to do any of the work.
Okay.
And we've had some projects, ABC Construction, I, I believe did, they did Spring Harbor. And they do very little of their own work. They, but that's rare. They subcontract everything and then they just oversee the project. We're demanding that as part of this. So we would not allow any, any of them to do any of their own work, mainly because it's, it's my belief, and I've talked to lots of folks who have done this already, that there are ways to tuck, tuck costs away when you do your own work. Trust us, we're giving you a good deal on the masonry. And even if you asked for, nope, we need an open bid on the masonry work, but you guys can bid on it. Lots of times, the, the masons in the area will not bid against the big boys who are self-performing their own work, knowing that there's a chance next time, we're not interested in you guys doing it because you low-bid us on, on the La Follette job.
Okay.
So we, we're, we're essentially having them act as a general contractor, just like Daniels Construction would or Findorf is at East High School right now, but you can't do any of your own work. Everything's subcontracted.
So have any of the surrounding districts that you mentioned that had used kind of option two, have any of them used this model or other districts that you're aware of?
This is a, this is a, a, a common model at some of the university jobs. It is not as common in some of the, the outlying areas where I think the, the comfort of a turnkey approach, they're willing to inherit some of the extra costs related to just signing off on it. And I didn't think this board, I'm not in favor of that approach because I think you, I don't think you get quite the value and the scope for, and the bang for your buck out of the projects if you just turn it over to a CEM that just does the work. And I didn't feel like our board would be terribly comfortable with me coming in January and telling you one contractor gets all, all $315 million before we pass the referendum.
I guess I'm wondering about something in the middle, right? Just because if we're hiring a construction manager that's going to charge a management fee, they're, they have to, and they have to absorb all of the risk for a very large project as a part of that management fee. I expect the management fee to be higher than if we were hiring someone under option two where they can earn a return from doing work, as you've said, hide, hide money in masonry or whatever.
Correct.
And so I just wonder if there's some hybrid where you could say, you could be, you could self-do the work up to $50 million or up to some? And if that would kind of cause us to have a smaller management fee? I don't know. It's just a question of if, if anyone's done that.
Yeah, so.
I wouldn't be comfortable giving the entire job to someone at this point, but up to certain amount, would that let us pay less for oversight and let them earn more as a result of actually doing work? I don't know, it's just.
It's certainly possible. Here's, here's what I think we want to avoid and why I'm recommending the third option. We want a, a construction manager that is on our team. Once they've signed on for that base fee with a guaranteed max price, they're working for us. Meaning they're going to get the most out of what's happening on our design team, and they're going to get the most out of what's happening with the subcontractors that are working for them. If you allow them to self-perform some of the work, that's where you kind of are allowing the fox in the hen house a little bit. That, oh, oh, the architects forgot this on this masonry wall, we're going to need a little extra money. That's not happening when you have a construction manager that's been reviewing the planset ahead of time and will make sure, number one, the design team gets it right, and two, if a contractor's trying to change order you to death, they're going to push back on it as well because they only have so much contingency to work on when these, when these projects are budgeted.
So I, I, I hear you. I think maybe, I would love to hear, maybe when you come back with completed RFPs, what would a standard management fee be for those university projects, given that this model maybe isn't something that some of the other school districts have seen?
Certainly.
Just because, given that we're bringing someone on a little bit late, we already have a, a, a number in mind realistically. There's a, a fair amount of risk for somebody to bid on this project, having not seen anything under the covers at this point. So just, I would be curious to calibrate what that fee is at that point in time.
Done, we can do that.
Um, thank you. Ali and then Nikki.
I appreciate having all three options and being able to examine them thoughtfully. I think the third option allows for us to have kind of the greatest risk management. And I think that that, you know, provides a certain level of insurance for folks who are investing in our community and are investing in our schools and, and want to know that the expertise is at the table. I greatly appreciate kind of the, the ability to, to recognize our capacity and what is beyond the scope of our capacity as a district and then to expand and extend our capacity. And I think that's what you all are trying to do. And so I, I appreciate that greatly. One of the things you said earlier in response to a question is that we're a little late to the game in doing this. And I do want to just say, in terms of comparison of our practices to, you know, surrounding districts, just that we're way bigger, you know? And, and I think we're the second-largest district in the state. And so I think sometimes when we talk about ourselves in comparison to others, I think we have to be realistic about the scale of our district and the number of young people and schools that will actually be impacted by what, what we're doing and the fact that that looks a little bit different than, you know, building a new school in Semprory versus renovating four schools and building a new school and doing all of that simultaneously. And so I think the scale of the project requires greater investment and, and sincere long-term planning. If this person were at the table right now, how would we be utilizing that, that person's management? And what, what does playing catch-up look like two, two and a half years before we get started?
Yeah, I don't know if the person will ever be at the table. As you stated, we are different. So the 35-plus meetings Kelly and I have been at in the last, in the last month and a half, I have, I have brought the team of architects to present to one of them. And I, I kind of feel like you guys expect me to know these projects as well as, as the architects. Kelly has not brought a financial advisor to present on her behalf. And, and Andrew Schopf is doing all of the work that potentially a third party would do in any other district. We're different, we're different. We have higher expectations, we have more in-house capacity. And I think there's a chance that a construction manager would continue to probably attend these meetings, but take a backseat and be here as a, kind of a local expert if there are technical questions I couldn't answer. But odds are, we, we would not ask any third party that would be working for us to be here sharing information that you would expect us to know just as well as they do.
How would you have utilized this person up to this point?
Yeah, they certainly may have been valuable for some more detailed cost estimating, but I think we're close. But as we get through the design process, where I think they're going to be really valuable is on both ends of this. We wouldn't want a surprise on bid day. Open up the envelopes, oh, oh, we're at $78 million. The architects told us we'd be close at 71. We don't want that. We also now want the other end of it. Open it up on bid day, and we open up a bid package for $64 million, and we get ahead another $6 million of amazing work done to this place that we underdesigned it. So having a construction manager onboard starting now, and these are still schematics, and can start to give us feedback to refine these projects, will be really valuable. I think that, I think the timing's right for us.
So ultimately, when you say starting now, we're looking at bringing this person on?
If you, if we send it to you in January, they'd be on, they'd be onboard in February and be with us for nearly a year pre-referendum.
Thank you.
Your word.
Nikki, and then we do have a whole nother two meetings.
Yep. I love that you guys are interested in this. So.
I appreciate, I appreciate everything on, on having small business, living wage, all of that. I think that's excellent minority-owned business. Can we also please include universal design? Because, no offense, but there are parts of East High School that are completely and utterly inaccessible.
Yes, that goes without saying, but you better believe it.
All part of these projects. Ananda briefly, and then Savion briefly.
All right.
I was just going to expand on what Nikki just said. And as you're moving the bid or reviewing the RFP, looking for evidences of agencies or contractors that have experienced building, buildings with more bathrooms for girls or gender-neutral bathrooms, or that have created creative learning accessibility for folks with limited mobility and so on. And to my point around the experience with K-12, I think it is important to have that. What I was commenting was that because it was your first bullet, I wanted to tell you that to me is that the, like, has less weight than other comments.
Noted, thank you.
Real quick, would this person, like, you know, once they get them on the, you know, on the job, would they be like meeting with individual schools to like start the scaffolding of projects to minimize like students and learning, or the disruption to students and learning?
Yeah, so there, there probably will be very little of that before November of 2020. But if we were to pass a referendum November of 2020, we have a full year of ins- we have a full year of instructional design that will take place at the site, where it would be construction manager, my team, and a team of architects meeting with the principals, the staff, and the students to design these projects fully. And that'll be a really valuable year for us. But yeah, the construction manager will be in charge of saying at LaFollette High School, we're going to, we're going to potentially build the fieldhouse addition first to free up some space in the middle of the building. We're going to build the pit first, free up some space in the middle of the building, and then they'll help us coordinate the schedule. They can help us coordinate the schedule pre-bid, and that'll actually save us some money. Because if you mess the schedule up during, on bid day, contractors will charge you extra saying, you're crazy. We can't build that in one summer. The only way we're going to build that in one summer is charge you double because we've got to bring double the people here. You need to build it over two summers. A construction manager will tell us that pre-bid, so we get more, kind of more value out of the projects.
All right. Thank you. Do you want to summarize?
We'll summarize, we'll, we'll close you out. You guys have seen this a million times. You're going to see us again in January. Then you'll see some back and forth with us during January to that springtime. We are hoping we get to a board vote somewhere in the spring, and then-
It is currently on the calendar in March, maybe? March, April?
We've got a March twenty-fifth, yeah, March twenty-fifth date that we're hoping that happens. You don't, it doesn't necessarily have to, but we're hoping we get there in that amount of time. That'll give us essentially summer and the fall. We've got the package put together. You have all voted on the language. And then it's on us to make sure that the community has all the information they need to make an informed vote November of 2020.
Thank you, Chad and Kelly and Andrew. You guys have been doing a lot of after-hours work to speak with people, so, and I know you're going to keep it up, but thank you.
Thank you.
Really helpful. Okay, we're going to switch gears and start the budget discussion for next academic year. So Kelly, if you want to bring up-
I had an ask Lisa and Deirdre to join me.
And then just in terms of, I think it's actually a pretty short discussion, really with the objective around getting some feedback on process for this year and how we want to, as this board, run the decision-making process, particularly since it's a little bit of a complex budget year for us. So, I think if we can hold questions till the end, and then I'm going to actually try to get a little bit of a round robin. It's hard to facilitate this way, and so maybe just ask for feedback in, in a row.
All right. And so Deirdre is available here for questions if they come up regarding some of the strategy as well. And I think she's still working on the PowerPoint. I'm going to give her a minute. All right. So, Jane, before I start, did you have any opening comments?
Okay, you're good.
So, as Kate already mentioned, we're here kind of kicking off the 2021 budget cycle. Typically, November and December are like pre-budget time periods for discussion for the boards. We talk about strategy. We talk about big rocks. If there's policies the board wants to change ahead of the 2021 school year, kind of those would be the kind of items we take on early in the year. And then we typically launch in January. What I'm going to present to you tonight is a revised timeline, something different than we've tried in the past. I've tried to listen to kind of your feedback, bounce some of that feedback off of Jane and some of our other team members to come up with what I think might work for this particular year. And then, of course, we'll look at the key budget components. And as Kate said, I'm really hoping to hear from you today on what your, like, first big rock is in this budget. Because really, then a lot of the other pieces start to move around that. So I'm hoping that we can get that type of very specific feedback from you tonight. Hi, welcome. So this kind of re-envisioned timeline is sitting up here in front of you. Essentially, tonight is what I normally present in January, right? So in January, I normally come forward with the revenue projections, our assumptions. We kind of confirm some strategy conversations that may, may have loosely come up in November and December. I'm hoping tonight, our January meeting is tonight. That then gives us time to do a lot of the work over the course of December and January, while everyone is also very busy in the superintendent search and the referendum work. Thinking that we would come back to you then in February, based on the big rocks you guys are giving us today, based on maybe data requests that might come through that we'll put out and ask for in the weekly update, so that we can get to work. And then we come back to you in February, essentially with a well-rounded budget, meaning we've thought through all those meat-moving pieces together. We rework that in March, when we get some healthcare kind of finalized and your feedback. We rework it in April based on the ongoing feedback and continue to stick to the April time of releasing a draft budget to the public. So it looks a little bit different, but what I'm hoping is that it's more holistic. I'm starting to kind of get feedback from what I'm hearing from you all that this approach of, let's talk about revenue this month, let's talk about salary this month, let's talk about staffing this month, kind of doesn't, maybe isn't working from a, a whole-picture perspective. So my thoughts are, if I get your feedback tonight, we can, this is Lisa and Deirdre. We're, we're kind of the budget team. We literally meet every Thursday morning for multiple hours at a time to, to pull this all together, that we can present to you a whole-scale budget. Maybe not the budget book with the fancy colors, but all the big rocks for your feedback, and we'll continue to work that. So that's the theory. So the approach itself remains the same, but the time of which we spend focusing on certain items might shift to more to tonight and then altogether kind of in February. So tonight we'll focus on, on your feedback that'll lead us to the goals and the guiding principles. We'll do revenue assumptions and projected enrollment tonight. Your feedback then will help us determine some of the compensation, staffing plans, some of the equity projects, and healthcare strategies. And then we'll bring that all together baked in February. So this picture is literally meant to be a picture explaining kind of what our budget strategy is going to have to be for this year. So if the board decides to put an operating referendum on the ballot, the idea is that we're actually going to have to create two budgets together as a team. We're going to have to create a budget that assumes the budget's going to pass because it's a different revenue assumption, and there'll be different investments that you all might want to make tied to that potential passing referendum. And we need to build a budget that assumes we would not pass because we need to be ready for both situations for next school year. So we work that budget together. Through April, we release two draft budgets to the public. We get public feedback, April and May, like we always do. And then the board ultimately votes on those two budgets in June. We implement in June based on the non-passing budget. We would need to, in case we should not, kind of pass in November. We get to October, you continue to pass two budgets and two levies, a passing and a non-passing. And then the election happens in November, and we implement based on whichever one passes literally in a few days because we'll have to turn the levy around pretty quickly. So part of the kind of strategic thinking around these two budgets then could potentially be, what are some of the things that are kind of easy to reverse in November, right? So you might put something in a non-passing budget, something else in a passing budget. What can we move kind of that quickly on implementation? Those are just some of the things that we're starting to think about. So first we do our revenue. We'll do that today. And then we have each of the key components of our budget listed in the lighter blue boxes right there. Those five key items are what I refer to as the main rocks in our budget. Ninety percent of our budget is accounted for in those five blocks. That's the reason I focus on those particular areas, to keep us kind of moving ahead with the budget. So to dive into revenue real quick. So if the board does put a question on the ballot, and if that's eight million dollars, I'm not making any assumption that that's what the board would decide, you know, right now. But that's kind of where we're at, and so that's what I've put into this slide. Our revenue limit is already determined by the state. It's a hundred and seventy-nine dollars per people. So making an assumption that we stay around the twenty-seven thousand student mark, we would generate four-point-eight million dollars for either budget scenario. Our actual enrollment report will be released in a couple of weeks. We're looking at probably about fifty students, so still really pretty stable down for next year. And then we'll have to take kind of our two-X charter, some of the other programs that might pull students out of the district in account. But sticking with twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven thousand students is about the right level for now. Chris, we've had multiple conversations about how to use the special ed categorical aid. So in this particular budget, we will see an increase in our reimbursement from the state in special ed categorical aid.
First time in ten years.
We've, yes, first time in a long time, right Nikki?
Ten years.
So we have, for this purpose, built this in to revenue. What it is, it's a reimbursable number. It's not quite the same as new revenue and the way other things are. But what we don't necessarily want to do is overcut on the does-not-pass budget. So for now, we're going to stick with that three million dollars of money that we think we'll get in in December of 2021, right? So it's a big estimate because we won't find out until the school year's even over. We'll re-up this estimate this January, based on what we see this December numbers looking at. And if necessary, we'll update that number in March and April. But for now, that's where we think we're comfortable working around. And then, as I mentioned, the revenue limit. So you could be looking at almost sixteen million dollars of new money for a passing budget, but only about seven-point-eight million dollars for the does-not-pass revenue budget. So how to budget for that becomes the information kind of we need to start to pull from you all tonight. There's lots of options. We're just looking for information on which rocks kind of go first. So, steps, if we fund fully step, steps fully, which are a piece of the employee handbook, you'd be looking at a cost of five-point-three million dollars. The board would have the choice to freeze steps, but that would be conversations that would obviously happen with the union via the handbook conversation. You could fully fund steps. You could freeze steps. We have some recommendations not to go half-steps because of the complications around implementing that. So it's kind of a binary, freeze or full. Base wage percentage, right now estimates are at about one-point-eight percent. So for this purpose of this slide, we've built in two percent as a possible base wage. So that would be four-point-five million dollars if you went all-in on base wage. You could, like we've done in the past, do zero on base wage in certain budgets for now. Make different decisions in November in a passing budget. You could go point-five. Or if you went all-in now, you obviously on the does-not-pass budget, you would be going negative. So then you would be looking at other levers to not only be at zero, but to kind of go the other direction so we can identify resources to repurpose. Staffing models always come up for consideration at a kind of evil, even enrollment number. It wouldn't be enrollment necessarily that would be driving staffing decisions. Employee healthcare benefits. This is your conversations about plan design and/or employee percentage contributions for the healthcare. And Deirdre can answer more questions on that in a minute. Strategic equity projects. These are your investments in expanding the behavior of health in schools, right? Continuing to invest in the early college STEM academy at Madison College. I put one-point-seven million in here, kind of plus, as a way to say those are about, it's about the number for the commitments we've made and our year-on-year ramp up and expansion of some of the strategic equity projects we've been in there already. Now, it is important to note that we have kind of self-funded through repurposing about two million dollars of strategic equity projects for multiple years now in a row, so that it is possible that it can probably self-fund by repurposing from within, either from previous priority projects that maybe weren't getting the outcomes we were looking for, or from other investments at Central Office. That's a way we've been working. And then we have one-point-five million dollars of required allowances about each year. That's our adjustments for open enrollment, two-X charters, kind of just contracts that go up every year. We always push that as far as we can, but that's kind of a placeholder for now. So these are kind of the big rocks and the magnitude that you start to think about around what goes up and what goes down. So our goals through this whole process is obviously to create two balanced budget approaches. And we have some key strategies that move those around staffing, healthcare, compensation, re-looking at past strategic priority actions for repurposing, and making critical decisions around new investments that the board needs to make. All strategies and levers. We will need to kind of maintain focus for this year as much as we possibly can while working together. And that's primarily because passing one budget in one year is hard, but passing two budgets in one year is going to be extra hard. So kind of we're going to have to work together as a team. We won't have the capacity to review everything in this school district. I'm hoping we can be focusing on the, on the big rocks. Because in order to get to a ten-million-dollar reduction for that non-passing budget, we're not going to be able to look at twenty-thousand-dollar increments to get there, right? We're going to need a hundred-thousand-dollar increments, still won't even necessarily just get us there. So we're going to have to be moving some of those big rocks. And with eighty-seven percent of our budget built into kind of people, salaries, and healthcare, that's going to have to be the rocks. We can't, we just won't be able to do it all. And then I've already mentioned kind of the other strategy about thinking around what, if, if we're in November, what are the things that we can kind of restore in a potential passing budget? It's just another strategy that's on our minds as we're planning. So that's what I have kind of for tonight, looking for feedback on the timeline and potentially some of, and your feedback on the key, key rock that would go first, Kate.
So, let's start on this side, and we'll just kind of, everyone go down the line. I'm going to start with Nikki.
Okay. My ones that I'd like to focus on, we say every year that Hola and our teachers are the most important, and then we have to struggle to do it. And I'm glad we're starting earlier, so that would be my first priority. My second would be funding steps and lanes. My third would be employee benefits. Those are my top three. That's me on the timeline. I think it's ambitious, but I think it's doable. Here's my one issue. I understand you can't look at everything, but there are going to be certain things sometimes that if we could also help you on the research if you need it. I mean, I know, at least I'm speaking for myself here, I would be glad to help on some of that if that, if need be because I know you guys are working quite a bit. So if it needs to be done, I would be glad to do it.
Yeah, so I have a couple of pretty specific questions. We have discussed already this year kind of classroom sizes and the outcomes promoted through classroom sizes. And I do understand the desire to kind of have it all, right? To kind of have the smallest possible class size, to pay teachers the most. And I also understand kind of the mathematical impossibility of that within one of our two options. And so I think being able to give us information in terms of our current class sizes and staff structure is really relevant. I think where we're piloting and being innovative. And I think ultimately, when we're having kind of a large-scale conversation, y'all, my big question is, is how are we going to use four-hundred-and-forty-million dollars differently enough next year to change the achievement gap, right? How are we going to invest differently enough to, to produce really different outcomes? And so I think those are kind of the, the large rocks that inform my, my consideration. I do think we often talk about classroom size and staff structure for more of kind of a sentimental place. And it'd be really great to have just hard numbers in terms of where are our smallest classes? Where are our largest classes? What do the results look like? And, and where, what, what change do we see as necessary consistently? And are smaller classrooms producing the results that we want? Because when I think of the smallest classroom in the district, I think of the Dane County Juvenile Detention Center. And I don't think anybody's arguing that just because that class is small, it's producing grand results. And so I think having a more in-depth understanding would be incredibly helpful.
Sure. I'll go next. So I think, I'm glad we are starting early. I think it's, it's so important. It's going to give us some time, so I agree with the, the timeline. You know, I think for the past few years, the budget, budget time is always frustrating, right? Because we want to do so much with limited resources. And, but I think the most frustration part for me is not rising equity, right, in our work. And we always leave that towards the end. And with the achievement gap, as Ali said, all the, the challenges that we are experiencing with our students of color, I really want us to lead with equity and infuse equity in the entire process, in our decision-making. We, we have been talking about the achievement gap for years. And, you know, we have improved a little bit. But I think we have to, our budget needs to say that, right? And I am proud that this board was able to provide raises for our teachers for the past few years. But I think it is time to invest in our students and figure out what works. And what is working now? What do we have to change to be very intentional in this, in this? So I want to see some, an equity process that you envision with this budget. And I want the board to really make ourselves accountable and not just say we're all about equity. And then when it comes to budgets, where it doesn't show. And I think I'm confident that this entire board, right now, in the makeup of the board, we should be able to pass a budget that focuses on racial equity. And so I really encourage us to, in every decision that we make on this budget, that it is about the students, the students that we are failing, the students who are struggling. And that should be on the forefront of our decision in this budget. So I know Kelly, you are, you have the same vision. And I think that Deidra, with your, the racial equity work that you've been doing, I think that you guys are, would able to come up with some recommendations of how we proceed around that work.
Well, thank you. This is going to be a really good first budget to be a part of. And thank you for the work that you've done thus far. You know, for me, just to echo Ali and Gloria's to craft a, you know, $450 million or some odd budget that can educate 27,000 students and achieve better and different results than what this district has historically achieved. Going into this year, I'd be looking for more areas of participatory budget process, particularly with our black and brown students. So some of those big programmatic rocks, you know? Can we have processes where they can give direct feedback to evaluate those, those programs and whether they're serving the intended purpose? And then going forward with the budgets, you know, I would be looking for items that not just can be easily restored in November, but you know, what projects can we leverage partnerships with that we have in the community that, you know, they might already have trustworthy relationships with our students? And then looking for, you know, between these two budgets, getting an outlook that provides, you know, the best sense of consistency and stability for staff. Kind of my big four, I think, four or three rocks are priorities.
So in terms of our approach and our timeline, I'm a little bit concerned that our approach remains the same despite the fact that we're creating two budgets and one has to cut $8 million. I think the approach that is outlined here is basically taking the extra revenue we have and figuring out how we're going to divide it up or use it without looking at the revenue or the money we're already spending and deciding if that money is being spent effectively and if we could use that money differently. We're looking at, you know, a, a small, very small part of the budget is the part of the budget that can be flexible, as opposed to asking, is what we're doing now with the rest of our budget effective? And are there pieces of that budget maybe we shouldn't do anymore? Because it's not serving our kids the best we possibly can. So I think we need to include ways of working as one of our strategies. And I think that actually needs to come in our timeline before we get into compensation. Because I think we owe it to our staff to start with an examination of how we work before we start getting into things that can affect their stability, like cuts to their benefits or not giving them pay increases. I, I think that's really important. I think we owe it to our staff to start with ways of working first. I think we also owe it to our kids, because if we're investing money in things that aren't actually getting results, let's invest it differently and do everything with the limited money we have to try to achieve equity and close gaps. With that said, I, I would put staffing and staff stability as a top priority. I would like to see equity charts for this semester. We're being told that everything's good in terms of staffing and class size, but then when I go out and visit schools, I'm not hearing the same, particularly in terms of special education staffing. I'm hearing concerns from teachers that we don't have the SCA staffing that we need to meet all of their students' needs. I want to know about that now before we dive into a budget where we might actually be making more cuts to staffing, because we have to make hard decisions. But for me, making sure that we have the best teachers and the support staffing in place to meet the needs of our kids is a top priority, as well as we need to take care of our employees so we can keep those excellent teachers in our district, so.
First, thank you so much, Kelly. I'm like so excited for this meeting. Because this is the second time tonight that we are hearing this like refresher of doing something different. And the way I understood your call is a little bit different than my colleague. I actually understood you saying like, before we do anything, give me what you're thinking, what are our parameters. So I'm basing on that understanding, so I hope I'm correct. So one of the things that I have been saying since May was how crappy we started out by really talking about staff compensation and equity projects as they were in competition with each other. And that felt extremely challenging. And where we had to make significant cuts on mental health resources and innovative things that, you know, are extremely supportive for either staff or for our students. So it, it, it really brings a sort of sum, zero-sum kind of deficit thinking. So I really appreciate, you know, in November for us to, to kind of ground in a conversation. So here's some things that I, that I'm thinking. I trust you and your team and your expertise to really bring us some innovative and creative ways to look at how we are scaffolding the budget, both priorities and within the priorities, how to do the thinking. I, I am curious to know districts across the country that are doing school financing in, in, in innovative ways. I think that would be something that I'm interested to, to look at. I think that we need to potentially make some really bold decisions around things that are happening in our school districts that, that potentially are good things and, but not the most equitable, equitable thing to happen. I also, I think I appreciate some, the comments earlier around the, the attachment of class sizes and vast outcomes. We have had decades of smaller class sizes. And I, I'm yet to be convinced that is always the best, like it's, you know, it makes sense to a certain extent, but it hasn't not proven to be always the, the same thing. I also curious about like how different class sizes based on content? Like what is, what is English class size? Because we, you know, how, the differences between the, the English and math class sizes and the FIAD or elective class sizes? How they are different, the eighth grade class sizes? And being clumped with the middle school class sizes versus the high school class sizes? So I think that having more of expensive conversation around those in a ways to address. I'm also curious to hear from schools, particular schools, or targeted number of schools, like what, what, what are their thoughts around this? What staff are thinking around this? I also, and this is in my other role, I get to see budgets from different schools across the state. And there is an assumption that the more we invest, the better results we're going to get. And, you know, while that is not the case. And so what are the things that, how we should be doing our investment? I mean, like I think that is maybe the frame that I wanted to, to lead is like, what is the investment? You know, not, not so much about the dollar amount, but the, the level of investment, the type of investments that we need to be giving to our schools and, and, and the districts, and, and the entire district. My last point. And I'm, and I'm ready to talk more specifics. I think we all have been giving like your philosophical aspects. But I'll give you one specific. Our security staff team is the most diverse team in our school district and the least paying folks. I'm like disappointed that we haven't elevated that. That's something that I would like to, for us to review. And also our special educator assistants and how they tend to be a lot of people of color, a lot of women. And I'd like to see some sort of comprehensive approach to their salaries as well.
All right, I'm going to jump in. I have maybe three points. The first is really pragmatic, just in terms of kind of the big rocks question, Kelly. Two comments. The first is, I, I personally, having watched this play out over the last couple of years, I, I feel like we need to start with the big numbers on the page. It's just really hard to get flexible after we go past wages, given that it is the significant majority of where we spend our dollars and the new dollars that we would expect to spend next year. So I'd like to start there and, and kind of lock in that. And we, we kind of tried to do that this last year in terms of you presenting us with the assumptions that you were building the budget around. But I think over the, both of the last two years, that process has been a, a little bit unwieldy and a little bit frustrating probably for all parties. I am curious if there would be appetite on the board to actually vote on the wage decisions preliminarily in the, in the February timeframe? So last year, the way that this process worked was we gave kind of guidance in maybe the philosophical, as you just put it, way that we are right now to Kelly. And she continued to build a budget around a certain base wage assumption and a certain steps and lanes assumption, which we then changed later in the process, which makes it very complex for our administrative staff, as well as for our school teams, to kind of build a budget, build workbooks, build all of the big assumptions. Because we've left the big, the big choice until last. And so I, I guess I'd like to force us to pull that choice up front. Because if you look at the numbers on this page, 10 million of the 15.8 million-ish is wages of new dollars. And so I, I'm curious if there would be an appetite to actually vote on the guidance, not on a budget, but on the guidance around what our, what our collective board guidance is on steps and lanes and base wages earlier in the process than in June.
I would, may I answer that?
So let me, no, let me keep going. And then I'm, I mean, I think it's just an idea to throw out there to, to force us as a group to make decisions. Because it's really hard to build a budget without knowing what that assumption is. So that's one comment on the big rocks. The second comment for me is I would really like our kind of Plan A and Plan B budgets to be closer together. Meaning I would, I would really encourage us to try to build an operating referendum that is smaller than $8 million in the first year. And I think that would make this first budget a little bit easier for us if our Plan A and Plan B budgets were closer together. I also think it's a good challenge for us to continue to bear in mind that we have two referendums that we are putting forward and that the, that the ask for the city to invest in our schools is a big one. And our city believes in our schools and will invest in our schools. But I want to also be very responsible with the way that we're doing that. So for me, I would love to aim for more like a $5 million first year number. I just think it would make this exercise a, a little bit more straightforward. And I think we could get there if we are willing to really think hard and be innovative around how we want to, how we want to navigate that. So that's kind of the maybe pragmatic guidance. The, I, I heard a couple of things that I, I'm really encouraged by and I just wanted to maybe weigh in and support them. I would love to do some sort of evaluation of what is actually working and what isn't working in the schools. We've done, we've, we've had the, we've had the ability to do a number of strategic equity projects over the last four years. And I certainly would be very interested to see an evaluation of how those projects are succeeding and understand what's working the best for our students and what is maybe working less well for our students, so that we could potentially repurpose some of that or double down on, on the projects that are really working. I am always interested in evaluating our staffing models and talking about how class size is relevant for outcomes and how it may not be relevant for outcomes. And then the last comment I would make, just in terms of our role as a team, I think this is a really special year for us. We have three different things going on that are all somewhat transformative for the district. We have the ability to set up a new superintendent for success with a really strong budget. We have a, a city that is growing and has the ability to fuel a really strong budget. And we as a group, I think, can do all of that if we are, stay together. It's, it's really easy for all of us to have different ideas on how to get at the best possible budget. At some point in the next nine to 12 months, every one of us is going to have to say no to something that we want and make some hard choices to invest in what's best for our kids. And my ask, I guess, of this group would just be to stay together as a group. I think we can make a lot of progress. We have a lot of money to work with here. And it's not perfect. There's no perfect answers in education, unfortunately. But I just, my ask of this group would be to be open-minded as we work through this. And I think just stay together as a team. I think we can make a really, a lot of progress and some really strong choices as we proceed through the year. So that's just maybe from my side. I have another question to actually tee us into. Kelly, do you want more specifics though on the last question?
Can I just have one question?
I'm, I mean, I'm not entirely sure I got like the one rock from everyone. So if there's an opportunity to go back to get one rock?
All right.
And, and a rock literally meaning kind of the five items up there.
Okay, how about let's do that? Everyone gets to say one thing. It has to be one of the rows on that page.
And that, that's perfectly fine. I believe teacher compensation is the most important. As an individual, an elected individual, I speak as an individual. I'm all for teamwork, but I have to go on those individuals who elected me and put me on this board.
Kelly, when you say one, I'm sorry.
When you say one rock, do you mean what is the area that we're most fixed? Or what is the area in which we're the most interested in shift or most open to shift?
The area you would put your money in first. So steps is $5.3 million if we fully fund steps. If we're fully funding steps first, $5.3 million goes in. Everything else moves around it.
Okay, I, I'm going to be completely transparent. There's a series of areas on here that you know I can't vote on, right? So they can't.
Good point.
Yeah, so I recuse myself from three of those areas. And that being said, what I am left to, to speak to and quite passionate about is strategic equity projects. Thank you.
I'm, I'm going to suggest we speak to base wage first. And yeah, I think I've spoken to Y, so.
So I mean, I, I agree. I mean, I think we speak to base wage to get it out of the way, but that's not my priority. I mean, my priority is the strategic equity projects. Really evaluating what's working and expanding on that if need be. And really be innovative around equity in our budget. And so that is, I think we, we do discuss base wage, but moving through a racial equity analysis throughout this budget is my priority.
Yeah, I'm going to go with strategic equity projects and, you know, fully committing this budget to racial equity.
I'm going to stick with staffing, but keeping it through a racial equity lens. And I want to put.
And I want to point out that this round robin is omitting our student rep, so.
Thank you.
So I think the base wage is important because it's like the base wage and steps and lanes is the largest buckets that you have there, but not to just rubber stamp them. I would like to actually look at as, you know, and leverage ways that we can do things more efficient, in particular to the steps and lanes.
And lanes.
And then the other priority would be the strategic equity projects. That would be the.
Thank you for pointing that out, Chris. Do you want to speak?
I'm not entirely sure what steps and lanes is, so I don't think I can really speak to that.
It's basically an increase for staff. So the base wage is the cost of living increase, and steps and lanes are opportunities as staff are moving in terms of longevity or increasing their education that they get additional compensation.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure what my rock in this situation would be. In my experience, it is really important that teachers have good morale and feel like they're represented by the district and part of the community. So I think that's not something that should be overlooked or something that could be considered to be like cut out without any impacts. But I also agree that strategic equity projects are important and they need to have time devoted to them to make sure that they're being done effectively.
So my second question for this group was just in terms of the difference between these two budgets, are there any areas that we wanted to give guidance to the administrative team at this point to explore for the Plan B budget, if you will, that may be different than what we've already spoken to? Yeah, so, I mean, we just kind of spoke to how we want to work through this from a process perspective and which are the big pieces we want to work through first. Are there any other areas that we would want to explore as levers to pull in the Plan B budget and that may be different than what we've already spoken to? If the operating referendum did not pass? So Chris, do you want to?
Yeah, none of these levers are gonna have the same impact as something like insurance payments or staff pay. But I think we should look at one-to-one technology in K through three. I question whether we really need to make that investment for our youngest children. Do they actually need their own screens at that age? It's not gonna save a ton of money, but it's, I think, something we need to look at. This has been said many years, but I think we should look at mixed-age classes in elementary schools as a way to stabilize staffing and stabilize class size numbers. However, it has to be done as a teaching approach. It can't just be done as a cost-saving approach. Like, we commit to all our K-1 classrooms in this school are mixed grades so that teachers can plan accordingly. I would like to see us sit down with staff, maybe, you know, really elevate staff voice in this process, but making sure that the professional development we're doing is the most effective professional development we can possibly do. Make sure that, you know, we invest a fair amount of money in that and make sure what we're investing is what our staff want and what they think is gonna be the most effective, especially to achieve our equity goals. Those are just three. I can probably think of more.
So I mean, I think along those lines, I mean, I think we're gonna have to be very creative, right? I mean, I think, and I think in the creativity and also moving towards the racial equity piece of what I've been speaking to all night, because I really want us to focus on this, is really get our Black student unions, our Latino student unions, those students who are hugely impacted every day in our schools, and getting their voice in this. Our Black teachers, our bilingual resource teachers, right? Having voice. I think we have to be laser-focused on either process here, right? In either column, we're just gonna have to be more laser-focused in the other column.
You know, one area, oh, sorry, is that okay? One area that we often don't look for inefficiencies is actual, where the inequities lie, right? And so the amount of rates and suspensions, and out-of-school, in-school suspensions, the cost per day for our schools when that student is back. I know the RTI Center did the math. It's something absurd of like $30 per day per student. You think about the, you know, times the amount of students that we send for suspensions. I think about the over identifications of students of color, how that also digging into our special education resources, and the amount of the ways in which we do discipline for our students overall. Those are things that are coming to mind. But I would be honest, like, I think, and I don't have access to all the data for Madison. I think that we can point at a couple of places in our schools that funding is, that investment is washing out. And it's, you know, not efficient the way in which we're investing. And I'm not trying to demonize any particular school or particular staff, but I think that is inefficient in our system. And we have to really be bold and look at, like, this grade level in this particular school, they're struggling, or this team is struggling, or, you know, this set of staff are really not aligned with our equity strategy. I think that is viewing those things as equity strategies, I think, are important.
Yeah, something between both budgets that I think is really important that we maintain a level of investment in is our 4K programming and maintaining investment, if not more, in early childhood education in terms of like the impact that it can have on students, not just at that grade, but down the line as well.
We just received the matrix, sorry. We just received a matrix of the alternative programs. I think, like, just thinking about, I know that they're not, they're one of the smaller buckets areas, but like, they might be an area of cost savings as well. And really being honest about like how we, if we don't invest in our students upfront and how we end up paying later for, you know, with cost recovery and alternative programs.
One other way of working we could look at that could potentially help us address staffing would be to be really thoughtful about if we could take staff out of Doyle and put them into schools so they could help us with student support in addition to whatever administrative tasks they're doing. You know, I hear over and over again from schools that we just don't have enough adults in this building. And they also say frequently, we would love if people from Doyle would come visit us more often and be in our schools more often, so.
Okay, I think, Kelly, can you summarize what you just heard from us? In terms of? Just in question one and two, I think, just, I just want to make sure that we've got some summary that works for us here. Sorry.
Well, I think we have some interest in taking a deeper look at putting kind of base wage first, at least the discussion first. I don't know that I, you know, so I think that's something we'll have to talk about. I think there's clearly some interest in looking at our class sizes. And we'll get you that data analysis, you know. We usually do that around this time of year. So we can, we can look at that as well. And then obviously, I've heard strategic equity projects. So potentially, my main takeaway, to be honest, is that I didn't hear healthcare, which tells me that it's a rock that we can start to move. Yeah, so Nikki, I think that was third in your list, right?
Yeah, but I just wanted to say I mentioned.
Yeah, it was like third. And so I think that's a rock that we know we can start looking at and start moving. That's a key piece of information for us. So we'll start to balance those, kind of the various pieces of input back as it relates to the strategic equity projects of the past. We've been kind of working and thinking about what that looks like through our equity tool in particular. We're coming up with a vision of what it might be to go all the way back, frankly, to 14, 15, and what are the investments that the board has made through the priority projects, name change then to equity projects over the years, where the money has gone, what's the investment we've made, is it working? Some have already stopped, you know, and money was repurposed years ago. But of those that are continuing ongoing, is that still what the board wants to do? Or is that something that we want to be thinking about for repurposing potentially for a greater equity use? So that's on our mind, and I'm hearing kind of some general support around that, I think, as well. As it relates to kind of the reduction strategies, mixed-age classes, at least I can say more now or later, but I think we've had a lot of conversations about the potential of mixed age. So I would say that that is on our radar for possible reduction strategies. On professional development, it's mostly Title IV, which doesn't quite help us with the rocks up there. But there's always ways that we're constantly thinking about making things more efficient just to make more Title IV dollars available. And as it relates to getting more voice from students, BSU, staff of color, that's something that we have in our ongoing work as well. So I appreciate the support there. So, I mean, there's always ways of working to continue looking at. I hear some maybe support around looking into our behavior education plan investments. There is quite a bit of funding tied into that. So I think that's like a takeaway that I start as far as looking at maybe a repurposing type of discussion or highest value maybe, dollar use. Dear Jelisa, what else did I miss? Are you gonna highlight anything?
I think that's right. I mean, I think, as I'm sitting and listening, I think the emphasis and the support around staff compensation is still incredibly important. So wanting to be very thoughtful about how we move forward there and, you know, really how are we finding this balance around staffing, right? So we always talk about strategic allocation of resources and the conversation, and I heard it coming up, connected to results. It's really wanting to make sure that we have the people in the right place doing the right work. And so being very thoughtful about what that looks like. So those are two of my takeaways.
I know we said Black and white students. Can we also include the disabled voice in there? That's the only thing I wanted to say.
I heard quite a bit, actually, about class size as well and multi-age. And I'm actually meeting with a group of principals tomorrow to do a little bit of reflection and hearing of their voices about that. I know that, at least on the elementary side, many elementary principals would rather go above the class size policy than need to go with an uneven multi-age strategy and that their priority is keeping strong teams together. We'll also be looking tomorrow in our budget meeting, not just on class size, but it's the other levels, levers around staffing. AGR status, which actually can fund either small class sizes or coaching, a coaching model. So either one of those strategies is acceptable under that funding from the state. And then also, we want to look at Title I and see how we're funding our Title I schools, what has been our process, how far down do we go? And we know that we want to align more tightly our Title I status schools with our smaller class size funding, should that be the direction that we're going. It's probably time to take a look at where those Title I contracts are, or, excuse me, the AGR contracts are held, because some of those schools are no longer in the same rank order of poverty as they were before. So I did hear a lot about equity and putting the resources in the hands of schools and kids that need it the most. So we will have to pair class size with AGR with title. And those might be some big rocks that we move.
That's a really good point, Lise, thanks for adding that.
Okay, I'm gonna suggest that we close this kind of input. And I think maybe you guys have some collective work to put all of those pieces together and feedback to us in our next work group. Here's the kind of process and the big rocks and the timeline of how we'll speak to each of these different levers. One last thing, and then we have one more meeting after this, so.
Because I don't know where those two things are. And I just want to clarify one of the points around disproportionality, like, understand better where the 15% special education money is invested in for our staff. And the second one, and I don't know where that is in the bucket, is we have a contract with the Madison Police Department. And that feels like contrary to our sentiment around investing in our children.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Rebecca, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned with that meeting. Gloria?
We're on to the next.
We're on to the next meeting.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Special Board of Education meeting, an open session workshop. The first items on the agenda is we got a few minutes that we have to approve. So can I get a motion to approve minutes dated September 4th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, oh, I'm sorry, your advisory, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Second is motion to approve minutes dated September 5th, 2019.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Your advisory wrote, Rebecca?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Motion to approve minutes dated September 9th, 2019. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Rebecca, your advisory wrote?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, so this is the biggest item on the agenda is the superintendent search community feedback report. We do have, is BWP in the house yet? Okay. Gotcha, okay. I just was like, the green room.
Calling him to the green room?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do? So this is a very, very exciting.
Gatorade, only red, Starburst.
Okay, I'll wait. I have lost control of the board.
May I take a two-minute stretch break?
Yeah, I know.
Hey, catch on nicely, it moves fast. Hey, I brought macarons last night.
That's true.
Yeah, you missed my birthday treat. You missed my birthday treat was last Monday.
I've been wondering, like, how many of us have our birthday on Monday this year?
Kate did, I did, Sabia.
Well, I'll be gone on Monday for your birthday. No, you're an August, you're the August. Monday's, um, I do my export here, you know. I'll be gone on Monday. What are you doing in Mexico? I couldn't do it.
We probably should have, but I didn't think about it. I never know when it's supposed to rise unless it's a chance. And I'm afraid to get a captain.
All right, we are, we have, we've already started the meeting, so we're just waiting for you all to get settled. Okay, welcome, Dr. Kastner and Dr. Hill. Thank you for all your work the last weeks or so and your community engagement and getting input from our community on the superintendent search, appreciate that. Before we start, I do have a question. Will this be available electronically?
No, neither, it's Ellen, the long one, the long one.
No, the long one.
The two little ones are media outlets and the long one is the room.
You just have to push the button.
And then you have to agree. Everything else is ABC, CNN.
That was two weeks ago.
There's a lot going on here.
And you, you need one I have that closer to you.
So to answer your question, both the PowerPoint, that's sort of the Cliff Notes of the, of the report, as well as the full report, what I'd like to do after tonight, if there are any corrections or anything that need to be made, so we'll send you the PowerPoint tomorrow electronically, which can then be placed on the website. But for the purposes of, I guess, some other people, we have a couple of extra copies.
You do have, so the actual report as well, will you?
Yes.
Have it available for us electronically tomorrow?
Yes.
Along with the PowerPoint?
Yes, both PowerPoint and the, the actual 85-page report.
Okay.
We already had a reporter call us on our way in.
Yeah, I kind of figured, we've been getting those questions too.
And we suggested that after the board has it.
Okay. Great. Okay, well, thank you, well, go ahead and we'll pass it over to you.
Go ahead, Susan.
Well, again, we appreciate the opportunity to work with you and serve with you. We had a great time with our community engagement activities. The community was outgoing and honest and respectful with good ideas and we wanted to assure them that we heard them and that we had indicated that we would present to you all that we heard, the good, the bad, and the ugly, because we believe that that's an important aspect of having new leadership begin, to know what they're coming into, what some of the expectations are, and a little bit of the history, which you will be able to glean based on the comments. So we didn't do any comments that, as a matter of fact, we didn't have any that had inappropriate language. We only had one that we had to redact the name and all of those are pluses. Before we begin, I do want to respond to one of the concerns with regards to multiple entries relative to the survey. And several of the community members raised that as a question. And so what, the way we've defined it is first of all, the survey is a snapshot and so consequently multiple answers don't really do anything. And if we were to limit it in terms of limiting to an IP address, then that would disenfranchise people who were using public computers. For example, someone that went to the library, because they all have the same IP address, it would then only accept one survey. What we find is that if there's a series that have like the same thing, when you have more than four or five, then again, we don't really, you know, take that into consideration and exclude it, but we also don't think it's a matter that will skew the entire survey. So I think that people were very serious about the survey, had some concerns about the validity and reliability of the survey, and we just want to assure them that again, this is a snapshot, it's not designed to be a dissertation or doctoral report relative to the statistics that come out of it. It is the quantitative component of the community engagement process. So we're going to go through the PowerPoint, as I said, which is the Cliff Notes of the actual report, but I'll also be referring back to the report in terms of where the information can be found. And finally, what we would hope at the conclusion of our report and presentation and question from the board, that you will approve the report and therefore really in essence approve the profile component, which is essentially those characteristics and skill sets for the next superintendent, so that we can continue our search in terms of trying to keep head hunt and trying to find people that meet those qualifications. If there are things, major things in the report that you have some concerns about, we will address them now and hopefully then you'll be able to approve the report with any additions or corrections that are included. Okay?
I had a board member question me once about reliability and validity. My response was that if I have 300 people that have done the survey and then I wait two weeks later and I have 700 people have done the survey, I rarely see a variance of larger than 1%. It just, the snapshot you need is really, it just works, works it out that way. That gives me comfort, gives me comfort even if someone did 10 surveys. So again, we're not trying to do this in a way that's with sophisticated research, but I will tell you, it does serve the purpose that we want. I'm going to start out with the very first part and then we're going to turn it over to Deb and we're going to get into the qualities and characteristics. Now, in your report and what I will be doing, you will find in the section appendix, what, Deb? Appendix C, you will see all of the slide information in the appendix. So if you wanted to follow and you went back to appendix C, you will see that.
Give them the page, give them the page number.
Page 41. So if you want to look at 41, our purpose here is just to give the highlights of the top three. First off, when you invite us into the community, I think it's a trust factor that a school board is allowing us to come in, you're opening up your community and you're asking people to share whatever they want to share, unfettered. I think that's a positive transparency, I think it works well, I think people did have voices heard and I think we were able, if you look here, to do what we're supposed to do, find perceived strengths and challenges, identify qualities and characteristics of your next superintendent. But we also build an understanding of the process and as Deb is fond of saying, all the people that we met, over 200 of them, we made them ambassadors so that they can go share the message with other people that they knew. And you remember, we did the same thing with the student groups. And so we tried to broadcast this and as a result, when you look at this, when we were here on the 29th and 30th, we had over 35 meetings in two days. We met with all these different people, but in the report itself is all the groups that you invited. If someone chose not to show up, which was very few, you need to know that you had an outreach, that you as a board and you worked with Barb, you did the outreach. And then who shows up, it would go from there. And sometimes it's not the number, because we had some great conversations with five or six people. So as you notice, we, in having all those meetings, in addition to the two community forums, that I think were reasonably well-attended, we talked to over 208 people and they participated in conversations and we have 1,481 on the survey. This is robust. Normally we might have over 150, normally surveys reach about 1,000. So the outreach and the work that your school system did to get all the messages out, it would show that this would be, this was successful. Now, so here's something we have to talk about in a context. We're going to first talk about the three strengths of Madison and your school district. So if you have over 1,400 people, actually almost 1,500, if you're at the 50% thing, if you have 50%, you're talking 750 people. That's substantial. And you're going to notice when you look at that, that there's some other categories that didn't rise as high, but we asked for the top three. So when we look at the three strengths of the system, and again, when you go back and you will, when you go back and look at the data, you might want to see, well, are there some other things there that come close or not? But there wasn't anything that all of a sudden caused us to add a fourth. So excellent teachers and staff, we actually had, the students gave us that too. Location of the district, obviously the university and universities were a big deal, the fact that it is a destination for people and a supportive community. So you're looking at everything approaching almost 50%. So again though, as you look at question one, you will see that, and Deb's going to talk about it, there was also, we did have an open write-in with 45 characters and you're going to see that information too. That was the only one we had. And those write-ins, they had certain themes, but frankly, they went all over the place because people had that opportunity. Three important skills needed for the next superintendent, collaborative leadership skills. So you're not talking about, you aren't talking about a top-down manager. You're talking about communication skills, cultural competency, and you know you live that. But here was neat, one thing neat, the students put communication at 70%. So the students, there were 370 students, they put communication at 70%. I think that's significant. And if anything, maybe if you ever get a chance to talk to some of your students in this process, I think you might enjoy that conversation. Three top characteristics for the next superintendent needs to exhibit, integrity, now that's not unusual, commitment to the community. And what we're hearing, they want someone to stay here. They don't want someone to come in, go out, they want them to stay here. And good judgment. So when you look at that, you pretty much want someone that we vet candidates that has that type of reputation. When we go into experience desired, it was a five-step Likert scale and I concentrated on extremely important or very important. And I just added the two together. Look at the very first one, experience with culturally responsive practices in a diverse, multicultural community. If that stands out at 75%, we would not be able, in good judges, to bring in candidates that didn't have this type of experience. There might be some superintendents of the year in more homogeneous communities, but in order to understand the community, they have to have experiences here. We, we're not, it's not unusual, they want someone that have their boots on the ground and has been a classroom teacher, which surprised me, because you don't always see this, and this, this also happened with the students, almost 68% on strategic planning. You don't normally see that, but it shows maybe your community gets your strategic plan and they want to see someone not just look at the strategic plan, they're interested in implementation. And we've heard that. Three important issues facing your school system in the next five years. Academic growth. When we talk about academic growth, it's more complex. It's almost to the point extending the top and raising the ceiling, being could more the advanced learners even go higher, because there's a pocket and we met with that group, and at the same time, we have achievement gaps. And these achievement gaps, whatever they be, with special needs children, children of race, black or brown, the whole idea of academic growth, which is the whole purpose of a school system, instruction, the fact that that shows up there, then there needs to be some follow-up discussion and you'll see that from the remarks. Personnel issues. We found that many of the personnel issues were the attracting and retaining of staff and all, which all staff, because you have some people leaving, but particularly staff of cul, of color. That the whole market out there, the whole idea that you should be growing each year and increasing your percentage to more reflect the diversity of your students, that came up often. And also, we're talking about staffing and I guess the number three, because it was reiterated in another question, increasing the diversity of the workforce. When you look at this quantitative data, it's a, one part of something. Now, the question is, now that we look at these engagement meetings, we have these responses of 224 people, comments we've heard multiple times, what are the prominent responses? I'm going to turn it over to Deb now and she's going to tell you what's in your report that gets, makes the numbers richer based upon what your community has set.
So one of the important, one of the important aspects is that everyone was asked the same set of questions. And essentially, everyone had the same amount of time to ask the set of questions. Kevin has shared with you the quantitative data, the focus groups provided qualitative data, and when you have an opportunity to read through the 30-some pages of this data, what you will find is it reflects what Kevin just presented in the quantitative data. And so again, that's, that's a good indicator that the community is closer in their thinking of what the strengths are, what the challenges are, and what they would like to see as a new superintendent than they think they are. And one of the things that I, I noted, that school systems for some reason, when we do these kinds of activities, they don't cross-pollinate the groups. They take the principals and they make them a group. They take certain organizations and they make them a group. They do the teachers, they make them a group. They do the students and they make them a group. And I contend that if they cross-pollinated those groups, that there would be better communication and better understanding because people are closer than they think they are, but they only talk in their own little group. And that was reflected in a lot of comments from the focus group people who talked about silos and indicated that they felt that the district operates in silos. And again, from my perspective, yes, that was demonstrated in how this was orchestrated and how people expect to be able to participate. So in the document itself, you'll take that out if you haven't already done so. And essentially, everyone had the same amount of time to ask the set of questions. Kevin has shared with you the quantitative data. The focus groups provided qualitative data. And when you have an opportunity to read through the thirty-some pages of this data, what you will find is it reflects what Kevin just presented in the quantitative data. And so again, that's, that's a good indicator that the community is closer in their thinking of what the strengths are, what the challenges are, and what they would like to see as a new superintendent than they think they are. And one of the things that I, I noted, that school systems, for some reason, when we do these kinds of activities, they don't cross-pollinate the groups. They take the principals and they make them a group. They take certain organizations and they make them a group. They do the teachers, they make them a group. They do the students, and they make them a group. And I contend that if they cross-pollinated those groups, that there would be better communication and better understanding, because people are closer than they think they are, but they only talk in their own little group. And that was reflected in a lot of comments from the focus group, people who talked about silos and indicated that they felt that the district operates in silos. And again, from my perspective, yes, that was demonstrated in how this was orchestrated and how people expect to be able to participate. So in the document itself, you'll take that out if you haven't already done so. Beyond the, the top three, we identified those that seemed to have the greatest number of repetitions relative to the conversations. So...
You can start on page seven. And page seven is the beginning of over thirty pages. And the very first one is board members. So what, what did the board members say, which is anonymous, but then you'll see that we recorded the data for each of the different groups. And you're going to see some repetition, but you're also going to see some common interest and passion of some of these groups.
The other element of that is we continue to indicate that this would be anonymous. So in order to ensure that, because some groups were small, where you had two or three people, we took whoever came. So that you'll find, when you see the qualitative responses, that I grouped some groups together just for the purpose of mixing it up. And again, people will be able to recognize their language, their vocabulary, because we did take notes, although it is not from a stenographic standpoint where it was verbatim for every word. But we did take the highlights out of each discussion. So you'll see some pairings and some mixings of which groups' responses are recorded, as well as the number of people that group represents. And again, that gives us an opportunity to, to determine how many people presented in this process. So, excellent teachers and administrators, that was a big one. That was pretty much across the board. The diversity was another one that was a big one. So the ones that we've listed here are the ones that appeared about eighty percent of the time in the comments. And I do a little analysis, a frequency distribution kind of analysis, said, you know, words that are similar to this, how many times was it repeated? So here are a list of, again, of some of the strengths. This commitment to social justice, great students, and I have to say amen to that, because talking with the students was great fun. The resources, and there are some pros and cons to resources. One of the things that came up relative to resources is equitable distribution of the resources. Yeah, we may have them, but how are they distributed? A positive reputation. We, other than the people who, there were several people who sent their comments separately and didn't participate in the survey of the focus group, but those were the only comments that I found where people didn't like the city, didn't like, didn't think anything good was going on. But the important part is that they felt safe enough to send that information. And so we want to make sure that they know that was presented and that was heard. A couple of them, nothing, you know, there are no strengths. So again, it's important for them to recognize that that's their opinion, and that's okay. But they're going to find that a whole lot of other people had a whole lot of other strengths, a whole lot of other challenges than they listed, and maybe they'll tag along and say, oh, yeah, maybe that's right. And that was just fine. Again, it's, this was open-ended, and people were allowed to say what they needed to say as long as they were respectful.
The other point, this is the type of thing that we would share with candidates. Where if the community is saying positive things and they're thinking about being applicants, this would validate being a good place to live. And so it's, it's also a type of thing that HR could be using, when you're talking about recruiting people.
The care about the community, that was another big one across the board. The kids were very emphatic about that. And educational opportunities, there were some that said yes, and there were some that said no. And again, that's, that's an important distinction to make. And again, the, the data presented was organized by virtue of the questions, so after you've seen the strengths listed by the groups that are indicated, then we look at the challenges. And as, as typical, the challenges seem to outstrip the strengths. So that's not unusual. So when you see long lists of challenges and only two or three strengths, that's pretty much what, the way it, the way it rolls out, so. The whole notion of implementation of your social justice and restorative practices. The curriculum not being focused enough, too many initiatives, teachers were feeling burned out or not supported. And again, that was an interesting thing that came from the kids. Climate, cultural, and morale. Morale and trust were two big things that came out of the conversation. And we talked a little bit about equitable allocation. School safety and discipline. And it was interesting, because there was this sort of break between school safety and what that meant, and discipline and what that meant, and there was a lot of questions about the discipline policies and whether they are being equitably administered and whether they're punitive. And again, someone needs to really take a look at that. So from that, we've developed this leadership profile, and this is what we are asking you, again, to approve the entire report. But this will enable us to all look through the same lens at the applicants and the candidates that will be presented, so that some person doesn't have in their mind what they're looking for, and somebody else has something different. If we all focus on the characteristics that came out of this engagement process, then when we screen the applicants, when we go out and headhunt the applicants, when we interview the applicants, the expectation is that we will develop our, our interview questions based on your profile, that the board, when we present candidates to you, will be presenting it based on our observations relative to the profile. When you create your interview questions, that should be done based on the profile. When you're interviewing the candidates, it should be done based on the profile. So what happens is, is that again, we share the entire document with all the applicants, but we especially ask them to look at the characteristics and skill sets to see if there's a match. Because there are some people out there that think they can do this job. And then when they get an opportunity to actually see what you want them to come into the job with, they're thinking, eh, maybe I need to pass on this one. So here are just a few. And again, you'll find them listed in the actual report. Visionary and a team builder, that was, again, one that was across the board. Experience in working with diverse student and community populations. What was fascinating about this was they talked about racial equity, but it was racial equity across the board, cultural competency, which is a whole different thing, and the social justice restorative practices. You need to know that across the country, these are the things that have risen to the top in terms of issues and concerns for many, many, many communities. So you are not alone, and everyone is wrestling with how to address these issues.
Most recently, Rochester and New York, this was almost the very same issues. Stated maybe a little bit differently, but the whole idea of how you're bringing the best out of all the students, so what she's saying, this is what we're seeing in a lot of other communities that have some diversity, even if they're suburban, urban, but they're all dealing with these type of issues.
And I can compare it to my home district that has eight-thousand students. This is a mirror of what they're saying. To Madison, with your twenty-seven-thousand students, this is what you're saying. To DeKalb County in Georgia with a hundred-and-seven-thousand students, this is what they're saying. And so across the board, regardless of size, because the populations of school are changing and our focus is changing on what we need to be about in schools, you're not alone in trying to look at these issues.
DeKalb is a hundred-and-seven... DeKalb is a hundred-and-seven-thousand, wow.
Yeah. So this notion of a background as an educator, not only an educator, but someone that's coming in, that's been in the trenches with a teaching experience and some administrative experience, particularly someone that has at least a footprint, a thumbprint somewhere with regards to special needs, multilingualism, and early childhood populations. Understanding a commitment to high levels of academic achievement for all students, especially those of color. The achievement gap has been around for more years than I care to think about or talk about, and we have not hit on the key to that yet. We keep working on it, we keep working at it, and it's been interesting in my international travels to look at other countries and how they've addressed their achievement gap and realize that the United States is still in the twenties in terms of trying to address this, and that we're really going to have to do some things differently. Part of that will include how we assess kids in terms of looking at really addressing the academic achievement gap. Communicator. As Kevin said, the kids thought that that was the top of the heap. Why are people not listening to us? That came out loud, clear, and strongly. We have a lot to say, we know what we need, no one is listening to us. I think Kevin asked one of the students, have you ever seen the superintendent? No. So they were really interested in having a superintendent who was going to be visible to them, who was going to listen to them, maybe make some changes, but even if you just listened, for them, that was an important aspect. Student-centered. It's always interesting to me when we talk about our leadership and we don't talk about kids, that's what it's supposed to be about. So putting student at the center of decisions and discussions oftentimes changes the conversation. We talked about the diverse population. Experience in district finance and budgeting. Again...
I want to make a point here. I was very impressed when we talked with your union leadership. It wasn't just about the teachers, it was about the students. That type of relationship doesn't occur every place. So a lot of things go beyond the best interests of students to the convenience of adults. I didn't hear that. And I thought, whatever's going on there, I, I thought that was a good reflection of your community. And I'm not, I'm not making this up, but I, I just thought that was positive as opposed when you're, you have everybody maybe not, it's more acrimony than agreement, that's all.
You want someone who is racially conscious. And again, this notion of demonstrating commitment and success. We already talked about the small pool that you're going to have of someone who has had experience in working with school systems this size and larger. And when you add to that, that variable of having worked in diverse communities and having specific experiences with social justice and restorative practices, that narrows the pool even more. So again, it's going to be important, it means you're out there, and as I indicated, lots of districts are looking for the same people, and so consequently, the competition is much higher at this particular point. And then I love these personal qualities. You want, in addition to wanting somebody who can walk on water, part the Red Sea, and juggle the sun and the moon simultaneously, you want somebody that's dedicated and sincere and student-focused, organized, fair and ethical. These are all values and personal qualities that you want your superintendent not only to have, but to exhibit. Interpersonal skills, collaboration was a big one. Knowing the history of MMSD, because of course you are unique, and you have some historical pieces that need to come into play in terms of addressing current and future issues. A team builder, again, who can go against the norm. So what we heard is that they're looking for someone who is not necessarily going to be conventional and think outside the box. And my question is always, why does it have to be a box? Because even, you're narrowing yourself even more if you've got to think outside of something. Why can't you be coming in with other things that wouldn't necessarily fit in a box? Holding people accountable.
I'd like to stop.
You want to go back?
Yeah. I, I want to tell you what I said to each of the groups. There's eighteen-thousand school systems in this country. Two percent are larger than twenty-thousand. So all of a sudden, you're dealing with three-hundred-and-sixty systems. When you're talking about the complexity of this size and learning how to work in delegation is just as important about being a leader. And so when you are going to be looking at that, that will separate some of the candidates, because there's a tremendous amount of complexity when you're in these type of communities that have wraparound services, have, have the significant language areas, you have homeless, you have all of this. So that's why I'm saying that it's a smaller pool, but there are people in systems, whether they're an area superintendent in Fairfax County that has thirty-thousand kids in their area. So when you look at some of these larger systems, you have some of the highest-level leaders that are into this in regard to the size factor. And then when you have even a, a principal that's the principal of the year, they aren't going to have some of these type of complexities. So I want you just to be mindful, if someone doesn't have that size factor, they've got to have something else that separates them as we're looking at the candidates. And that's what we've found as we've been working with some of the systems your size. And, and that's what we hope that the pool is going to reflect. Go ahead.
So, the next steps in the search process, we will be approving the leadership profile, hopefully. He said ASAP, I said tonight. Recruitment, the application deadline is November twenty-fourth. We have about eighteen or nineteen applications that have already been submitted. We have about, I want to say, a half dozen people who are in the pipeline that we are either going after or people are calling us about. So we expect that we will have a pretty decent-sized pool, but it'll be winnowing it down and narrowing it down to someone that can handle the complexities of this district.
I had two phone calls on the way here today, talking about, they thought, great candidates, because they, they know that this is a good place, and they also know people that are pretty strong. So this starts heating up now.
So I just want to say a word about recruitment and assessment, because we had this conversation before. The confidentiality is critical mass. We will lose good candidates if we're banding about their names. First of all, it jeopardizes their current position unless they get to be a semifinalist or a finalist, and no one wants to have their job in question. Secondly, you know how people are, they Google and do all kinds of other social media kinds of things, and sometimes people are just looking for dirt as opposed to finding out what the other version of the story is. So when we present candidates to you, we will have done our homework, and if there are questionable issues, we will bring those to you and say, this is how the candidate responded from our perspective. And so if we think is a candidate worthy, although there may be a negative article out there, we would say that to you. So we'll be upfront and honest in terms of where the candidates are coming from.
Sign, sign confidentiality.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in a minute. So the, the other components, you need to schedule interviews. Well, we have dates for our presentation and the date schedule for your first round of interviews, but we don't have dates for your finalists, your semifinalists, for your day in the district, and that's going to be like the next major thing. And it's also, again, another one of those harder things, because you have to find three consec, two to three consecutive days when everybody's available, because this is a not-you-can-call-in type of activity. This is one that you're going to all have to be present. And then you have to have a window of time for those candidates. You have to determine whether you want to do a face-to-face conversation or whether you want to do an electronic conversation, because if you have candidates coming from all over the country, and again, snow here in Wisconsin before Halloween...
On Halloween.
Yeah, and on Halloween, may cause some challenges. And I'm always concerned about candidates having equal opportunities to come before the board. So one of the things that I always suggest is for that first round of candidates to do it electronically, because then everybody is on the same wavelength and, and being presented in the same manner. For your second round of, of candidates and interviews, you would do that face-to-face. And hopefully, the weather will have, we will be, we'll have spring in January. I'm, I'm pretty optimistic that way.
I'd just like to end with this slide. No split votes. We will, this is where the board has got to come together. Candidates will not bring their families on split votes. If you have a board election, all of a sudden, it swings two people, this is too big of a decision. And if it takes a little bit longer, if anything, we hope it's a difficult choice. But the whole idea here, and I have seen this happen, boards will come together if we do our job of getting you a good pool. And we're pretty confident that we'll be able to do this, because this is a destination for people. It doesn't mean that there isn't room for improvement here, but there's more resources available here that leadership can take advantage of, and it's pretty ripe for it. I mean, there's a lot of setting the table that's been here. A lot of these issues are now out in public. Now the question is how they bring together, as you've seen, there's thirteen bullets on the leadership profile. The question is, would there be any of them you'd want to take away? And frankly, if you look at all the... And frankly, if you look at all the data, thirteen is thirteen. It just happened that way.
So now, we're open, I just want to go through a couple of other things in the actual report. Again, the report is eighty-three pages, eighty-two pages long. The actual comments. The page, page number five lists the appendices and breaks it out for you in terms of where you can find the results for the survey, the completed results for the students. One of the other things I, I want to mention is that there was a wonderful effort to include the survey in other languages. We had three responses in other languages, which is fairly typical. We, we indicate that before we go about the business of trying to have those, but you want to make sure that that's available in case anyone needs to use them. In the actual document, there were sixteen, I want to say there were sixteen individuals who chose to write their comments for, on the, the survey form that we use for the focus groups. Those are separate and apart from those comments that were a part of the survey. So you have a plethora of information from the community. And again, we do encourage- Let me lose my train of thought. So you have an additional, a plethora of information. Don't take any of the comments personally. We didn't. We just listened and informed the community that we would be sharing with you what they shared with us. And again, we'll make sure that you have the clean copy and the electronic copies tomorrow so that they can go on the website. And anybody that has any additional questions, feel free to email Dr. Kastner or me, both from the standpoint of the board and the community. But I think that that notion of transparency and when they see their actual language in there, that, that will give them more confidence in this process. And now we're open for questions, Ms. Reyes.
Thank you, thank you. Very informative and thanks for all your work out in community. Let's start, let's follow the same process. Let's go ahead and start with Ananda at the end there.
So my biggest question, and we received a little bit of feedback from the survey, is the literacy influency around speaking around anti-racism and racial equity. I noticed that you spoke extremely well to those points and also from a little bit of what, you know, demonstrated today, also having sort of a knowledge, a historical knowledge of the issues that we are facing as a district and our commitment and interest to finding individuals that are responding to that specifically. So my question to you, Deborah, specifically, is that what are you, how are you, what mechanism are you going to ensure us that you're measuring the candidates in regards to their own literacy influency around culturally responsive practices and anti-racism and, and racial justice? I will, okay, I'm, let me, yes, I'll pause here.
Well, as I said, one of the things that happens now is once the profile is approved, then we craft our interview questions around those. And so one of the questions would be, "Tell us how you've worked with other cultural, cultural groups. Give us some examples of experiences that you've had with different languages." So it'll be that kind of questioning, but we'll also be looking at the application. One of the questions on the application says, "Do you speak any other languages other than English?" And so again, we, we go right to the heart of the matter. And from my perspective, you do not have to be, you do not have to speak the language in order to understand language differences. And I'm, I'm going to take an opportunity here to give a commercial break. Having traveled internationally with ASCD, one of the things that just, just was exciting to me is that every other country respects, appreciates bilingual education, except good old USA. Here, we're still debating whether bilingualism, it's almost seen like, you know, a badge of, of, not a badge of honor, as it should be.
A deficit.
Thank you, a deficit rather than, that's something to be celebrated and to be proud of. And so consequently, having a conversation with the candidates about their perspective about that. So you don't have to speak another language. The district that I was superintendent in, a third of the population was Korean. And I didn't speak Korean. But I engaged myself with that community to find out what some of their issues and what some of their concerns were. And so again, it's that notion of what have you done to extend yourself, particularly from a cultural and language perspective.
And then another way, we would be asking for evidence. We would want this to be data-based. And we'd go further than them just saying, "Well, I get this." Well, show me where you have shown where you've been involved in it or your system is involved with it. Is this the very first year? Have you been doing it for several years? So we have to probe deeper, as you will, if you choose to interview any of these people. It can't just be a, well, a, a paper understanding where you know the definition. It's, it's have you walked some of the walk.
So I'll just say one last thing and then move. So I appreciate the, the sort of multilingual perspective. I think I was speaking directly to sort of anti-racist work and be, be, you know, encompassing but not limiting to language. I noticed that like on your slide, you had the word equality, but you said equity. And I understood that you, like, the depths that you were talking. I think that, to me, is really important to that. And given, I appreciate your last comment around evidence, understanding that most districts are not explicit around their anti-racist mission. So they might not have experience, but to me, what is important is that they actually articulating their own racial justice, racial journey and have a racial narrative that they can speak to and are bringing those things to the, to the front unprompted. So before they are prompt to anything, that they're actually speaking to those issues, both personally and the work that they have been doing.
And actually, one of the questions that we've used in some interviews have, have been define equity and define equality. From their perspective. Because I think one of the things that's happening as we're having these conversations, again, across multiple districts, is we haven't developed any clarity on that. And people have their own thing going on in terms of what that means. And sometimes that's what causes the discord.
So I was in one of the sessions and took a lot of notes. And I'm just noticing that a lot of the language that's in the desired characteristics, which is probably on purpose, but it's much softer than some of the language I actually heard in the session. You know, instead of saying, "We want some experience doing this thing," that people are saying, "We want proven results doing this thing." So instead of saying, "Some experience in closing gaps," we want people who have proven results in closing gaps and they can show us data, and the data is meaningful. So I'm just wondering like how we get from like these softer qualities to the actual like very firm statements we were hearing in those sessions.
Have you gotten a chance to read all of these yet? Because I think you, yeah, call me tomorrow after, after you've read some of those. Because there are some that are more passionate in the language that they use based on that. But you almost have to go through the whole thing in order to see where those are.
And I'm just speaking specifically to like the softer language and the desired qualities versus the much more forceful language we heard from people at the sessions and how we, you know, the interviews might be the place where we bridge that gap, but I just want to make sure.
Chris, I want to make an observation. Many other states do a lot more testing. Wisconsin doesn't seem to be doing a lot of testing. And this testing, which means there's high stakes to whether you graduate or not, and also the fact that they disaggregated by subgroups. There are a lot of people, I'm thinking of a candidate from Chicago, that when you look at the fact that they've raised and reduced a gap and they have proven results, some of this evidence is more prevalent in other places. But in Wisconsin, it, it's not, it's not part of how it's organized. And so sometimes you're going to see some candidates that are going to be a little more hard in the sense of actually explicit data that would show things. You know, it's one thing just saying you increase the graduation rate. But what evidence do you have of the gradu- graduation rate is based on a certain comments competency of passing Algebra II, writing tests, and things like that? Many states differ. And when I was looking at trying to find this out, I, I learned that more about Wisconsin. But that doesn't mean that a local school system can't develop their own type of expectations that they would for their graduates.
And again, I think you're going to find a combination of some of the soft language because that's what people were saying. Phraseology becomes an important factor. And I know that a couple of, or at least one community member questioned, again, how we were going to emphasize the passion and some of this anxiety about it. And part of it comes from our telling you what we heard and how we heard it, as well as some of the language that was used. So like, as I said, as you read through some of the various groups, because it's going to depend on how the group was orchestrated, but I think you'll find some language that kind of demonstrates that passion.
Just a couple of things we might want to add. Possibly, under personal qualities, I remember hearing that people were interested in having someone who's a risk taker, someone who's not afraid to take risks.
Yeah, there, there probably, we could probably add another seventy-five different words. And so what we intentionally did was try to, again, at about an eighty percent level, take those words that we heard that frequently. And that's what you, that's what you see. And so you're going to have a whole spread of things that could be included, which is why we're giving you all of the comments, as opposed to those that kept recurring over and over and over and over and over again at about that level. So-
You will see that coming.
And then I just want to, I just, I, I, there is an opportunity for us to review the information that has been given to us tonight and to add or take out some of the leadership profile stuff, right? I mean, I, we'll have time to do that.
I don't know about take out. Add maybe, but I'm not sure. And again, let's talk about the reporting of itself. It's what we heard. It's the language that we heard.
Right.
That we're sharing with the board. So when you start to take out or to add to, then it's not really reflective of our report as much as it's reflective of, of what the board, you know, how the board feels.
And this is, this is, this would be information coming from the information, right? It's not, you know, so I just want to be clear. It is information that we are reading in the packet based on what you've heard from the community.
Correct.
So totally respect the fact that, you know, we maybe not take out, but we can add some leadership qualities that we feel maybe were missed and, but in the, in the information. Okay.
You know, here you are, you're just receiving this.
Yes.
You don't know it's all there.
Right.
And I know, I know that Deb wants to get this going.
Yes.
But even if we have concept approval and the board finds a way within the next few days of using that, if you see some other data that drives an additional comment, you should have that flexibility. But if you give con- concept approval and then knowing that you might make a few additional comments, then, then we can get moving.
Right, exactly, yep. Yeah, definitely. And the board will have an opportunity to, to add any of those comments into the questions, into the final questions that, that we may have. So Nikki, we're not here with you yet. Savion, we'll come back to you.
Yeah.
Okay, Kate?
Thank you for this. This is, we're sorry, we're, we're exploring some of the data in the back. It's really interesting. And thank you very much for disaggregating students. It's really, really interesting to see the ways that students are aligned and support kind of the entire community and also a few of the areas where they might have a slightly different perspective. So thank you. That's really, really interesting for us. I, I have one question and then one just very logistical thing I wanted to call out. I'd love to hear you, you got to meet a, a bunch of folks from our community. You got to speak to each of us one-on-one. You've seen a lot of the raw data from kind of a bigger data set. I'd love to hear you speak to how you're going to articulate our strengths. We know we're in a competitive pool. We want to get the best candidates. And I'd love to hear kind of how you are going to differentiate us in, in the market in order to cultivate the best pool for us, based on everything you've heard and learned, so.
Many places that have some of the diversity and even some of the degrees of poverty don't come close to nineteen thousand per student. They're down to twelve thousand per student, and think about that, what it does in the classroom. The fact that you have the university base, the fact that you have a, a reputation. So some of the things that are just natural are going to separate them. It seems that the challenges are here, but I don't think the hill is as high to climb. And we're talking, we're not talking about a ninety-ninety system. Now, when you have ninety percent free and reduced lunch, you have ninety percent diversity. There's a lot more things to overcome, and then they don't necessarily have some of the resources. So that makes your community a little more unique than others. And so it, and people do their homework. And so the story, you tell it, I don't think you do a good job necessarily telling your story from, and I don't mean this to be-
That's why we hired you.
I don't, I, I don't mean this to be disrespectful to anybody. But, but we actually heard that. You have a story to tell, but you also have issues out there that you're talking about that some other people aren't.
Here, wait, can I?
Just a second, Ananda.
Thank you for that. The logistical one, I, I just wanted to comment. We had picked some dates in December that we all held for interviews. I noticed those dates were not on your timeline. So if we should release the dates, can you let, I mean, I, maybe just to double-check on the logistical-
We do have the dates.
In the, in the calendar.
We have, we have the dates in, if we go back.
And the online calendar has the dates.
Okay.
And we share, actually share that.
I just, we've, we've got here, the board conducts first round of interviews in January.
I see what you're saying.
So maybe you can just get back to us with, with either one works, but I just, I would like to make sure that we're holding the right-
Well, you know, what we could do is we could make, and we could edit this and put in the placeholder interview dates that we have. I think it was-
That's, if that's what you guys are still planning on and think we can work with, then that's great.
No, you've given us dates. You gave us a-
Great.
Okay, Ananda, you had a clarifying question?
Just clarifying the last comment regarding our, our story. I didn't understand what your, the point was. That you mentioned that like, you have a story, we heard, we're not telling the story well. And I, I've, there's a punchline somewhere, and I don't think I understood what the-
There's no, no, this is what we heard from some of the-
Oh, I, I still don't understand. Like, what, what do you mean by that? That you didn't feel like we tell our story?
I think one of-
Well, I'll tell you what, nineteen thousand per student, which I don't, is the fact that you are in the upper groups of the whole United States as far as cost per pupil. That's different than areas that are dealing with significant poverty. Now, it means that you have potential resources, more so than some other places. The fact of your early childhood program, I think, is pretty significant. The fact that you have your partnerships, not just with the university. Now, we, we were just here for a couple of days. But I'm just saying, we're hearing things that kind of is the type of things that I'm going to be sharing with candidates that should get them pretty interested of seeing the potential that, that they have going in, as opposed to worrying about whether a school system can pay their bills. That's what I mean.
In addition to that, again, some of the, the programmatic things that you have going on are really exciting. I mean, again, back to universal travels where I talked about language not being important here in the United States. You guys are kind of beyond that, because you have these dual-language programs and people are talking about the quality of them and wanting more. And again, to me, that's addressing one of those global issues. Somebody's going to come in and be excited about that. Because you have other places that, you know, still arguing over whether we should do French and Spanish and whether we should wait till sixth grade. And so I think that those are some of the pieces, when you have someone sophisticated, that's a story you need to tell. It was interesting to me that there are things that you're doing in the district that people within your district don't know that you're doing. And it goes back to that communication piece. And if you're not telling the story within, I don't know how you get around to telling the story without.
Ananda, when we talked to the dean of the ed school, the fact that they have seventy kids of color coming out of the school for potential educators, UVA has about eight. That's story. And that, whether they come here or not is one thing, but the fact that you are getting such a large pool, that can help solve a problem, and you just want to try to keep them home.
I think kind of foreshadowing what the process looks like moving forward- I think kind of foreshadowing what the process looks like moving forward, I guess, you know, how do we utilize the, the synthesized version of this information to the greatest possible extent, in terms of representing the community's voice? And then I think, you know, the, the question is, is we're, we are a large district, we're a large and diverse community, and I see that as an asset of our district. And, and that being said, the participation in surveys, although robust, doesn't fully reflect the district. So how do we get at kind of those components that, you know, maybe aren't reflected in the gathering of this information? And also, how do we, you know, represent kind of fair aspects of this work that maybe the average person isn't necessarily aware of, right? So I, I think it's interesting that, like, licensure doesn't come up, right, throughout this document, right, this acatement? That the person be, be licensed, be able to be a superintendent, right? Isn't something, is it feedback that you hear over and over again from people? Because it's not necessarily something that comes to the forefront of your mind when you think about kind of the, the nature of the position. So how do we use this information and then fill in the gaps in understanding, and also the gaps in representation?
There are a number of possibilities, and again, it may be something that you wanna begin to explore even prior to getting a new superintendent, just getting it organized, or determining that that's one of the first tasks that you would like for them to do and organize. Concrete example, in my, in a previous district, as a matter of fact, my home district, this, that came up as a question. And so the, the board came up with a leadership team of representing those kinds of communities, and asked them to come together and to create some ideas about how we could do a better outreach relative to this process. And so they got together and they came up with like fifteen different things to do in order to get people to take the survey. One of which was they created a flyer, and that flyer went up in the grocery stores and in the churches, and in the child community centers. We'd never had anyone do that before. And I can tell you the, a personal experience, on a Sunday morning, my pastor got up and announced as a part of the bulletin, "The school district is looking for a new superintendent. How many of you have taken the survey?" And, you know, we had about three hands go up, and mine wasn't one of them, because I hadn't taken it at that point. And then announced, "In order for this to work, in order for us to be able to support the new superintendent, you need to engage in this process." So by next Sunday, I wanna see a lot more hands go up in terms of the survey. Another organization administered the survey as a part of their activity. My point is, is that it took people who are concerned about those populations getting together and brainstorming ways to engage those populations that may be above and beyond. Someone talked about canvassing, you know, their neighborhood. And so those kinds of things were essentially set up. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. But the point was to make a concerted effort to figure out what to do in order to do that. Again, a concrete example, when I was superintendent, and tried to, to engage some of the Korean families. What I discovered was I needed to go out. I needed to be invited to their house, and they invited their neighbors, and it became a more personalized contact with the superintendent, rather than having a big meeting and expecting for them to attend. And so again, it, we often want to have somebody else solve the problem for us, rather than realizing that maybe the solutions are internal. So one of the things that, that we've done is, again, create this ambassadorialship. So now you have a whole group of people out there, at least two hundred and eight, who we've talked to, who we named as ambassadors, and providing them with some other mechanisms or ways, or asking them to come back together and to brainstorm, because they were concerned about marginalized groups, and they were concerned about getting more communication out, and they were concerned about identifying this person as their superintendent as well. So again, it's taken that extra step. The part of the problem is, if you notice, there was a lot of conversation, or you will notice when you read this, there was a lot of conversation and concern, just as you've expressed it. And now that it's on the table, let's figure out how to deal with it.
Yeah, I by, I by no means mean to suggest that this isn't a, a really gallant effort in terms of representation, because I think, you know, you've done as, as thorough a job as, as one could expect. I think the reality is, there is always folks who, you know, can't access participation for a variety of reasons, and so how do we, you know, utilize our, our own ability to interact with those communities as a board, I think is relevant. The other thing is, is I think, when you have gathered this kind of information before, have you seen boards utilize community input, input throughout the decision-making process?
First of all, it's getting the word out. And again, it's the sharing. And it's whether you now, the board has now provided you with this information, if you wanna do follow-up activities relative to this process, then that's something that within the board and within the administration, you can organize. And have people be able to come and respond in terms of the document in and of itself. I think that what happens is, is we try to make one situation or process solve the problem that we've been having all along, as opposed to highlighting and emphasizing that particular problem. And like I said, finding out that there's some commonality about that particular issue, and then bringing to the table those people who have that as a concern, and using this document to say, you know, "Did you take the survey? And if not, let's talk about why. What could we have done to have encouraged you to do it?" One of the things, again, getting back to my Korean population, my board said, "Well, how will you engage them?" I said, "I'm gonna ask them. I'm gonna ask them. What, what can I do? What do you need for me to do in order to get you engaged?" And it took me going out into their realm, into their Korean school, started off with about ten parents that showed up. The next time they wanted to know if they could meet again, I had about twenty show up. And then after that, it was much more engaging, because they realized that I was interested and that I was listening to them, and then they were bringing their friends in. And what was noted, or noticeable for me, is that they were concerned because there was a language, they felt that there was a language barrier, and they weren't as comfortable having English. And so we brought in interpreters, and said, "That's okay." And so again, it's going, there is no box. So it's going beyond that in order to, to follow up on, now that you have something in black and white and print, and saying, "Now, how can we go out and have some more conversation and more dialogue about this, and start being solution-oriented?"
So I wanna make sure I understand what you're saying, in terms of utilization, is that this is a means to exceed expectations? And to do more?
Yep.
And to promote kind of an ongoing outreach and channel of communication between us and the community throughout this process, while having, you know, some, some salient points to reflect on?
I think, I think this report is a conversation starter. And before it was even here, it might not have been at least the point of getting debated whether they agree or disagree. So now, gone through a process, and then people can validate, or they can prioritize certain things, those are good conversations. And that's why the whole idea that this is public record, there might be some people, and we've shared with them, "If you think you have exceptions and we didn't get it right, you should be talking to the board."
Thank you.
One, I'd, one, I'd like to apologize for missing my session. I was sick all week, so I did not get a chance to meet with you. Therefore, this has already been addressed in earlier meetings, I'm just asking for a little latitude. I agree with you guys that we don't sell ourselves as well in the district. Like any district, we sometimes show the good over the bad, and I think that's human. My question is, how do we increase transparency as a district in this process?
I think your day in the city is transparency. Not everybody does that. I mean, they'll make, and you have the latitude to do that. In some states, you don't have the latitude. Within ten seconds, when whoever those people are, everybody is going to find out if they're for real or not. So that extra step that you're doing is a check and balance on you as a board. And, and again, I saw it happen in Rochester, and I saw it happen in Columbus, and it was positive, because we had a good pool. So you wanna make sure that when you're getting down to who those finalists are, you're just not putting in the numbers. If there's only two, then just put two out there. But you're prob, we, we definitely think you're gonna have more than one, and I think that would be part of that.
Additionally, one other thing, I was pleased to see that people said knowledge of special ed was important, and I thank you for including a not often included group, and also on video, and making sure that the survey was as transparent and disability-friendly as possible.
Um, yeah. Uh, thank you for gathering all this information, first of all. Something that raised a little bit of a red flag for me was when you said that students wanted to be listened to, even if that didn't mean the district taking action, based on what they heard. In my experience as a student, listening to teachers, listening to teachers in my input session, I don't think that's true. I think that it's important that our district listens to people as a first step, but beyond that, I think it is really important that our district takes what they hear and actually implements that. And I'm just wondering, like, in your interview process, will you be asking people, like, what experience they have in listening to people and actually implementing what they've heard?
Okay, there, there's an aside to that. And part of it is the grown-up world, that sometimes there are things that sound good on, on the surface, and they sound like they should be easy to do, but there are all kinds of variables that may stop that. And let me give you a concrete example relative to students. If you look in the students section, we had some students that liked block scheduling, and some students that didn't. So, and it really came out to be almost about fifty-fifty. So the question becomes, do you do block scheduling or not? And again, it depends on the nature, how that's structured, how that's going to impact relative to staffing. I mean, there are other variables that go into what block scheduling looks like. So sometimes students have fantastic ideas that do need to be listened to and can be implemented. And other times, students come in and they, you know, you have one group that wants to do this, and one group that wants to do that, and then you have to try to figure out how to navigate that. So the intent was not to say that students shouldn't be listened to, but there's a reality point in terms of what can and cannot be implemented. The things that I always love to hear about students is, "We don't get a whole lot of, we don't like the lunch program," you know, kind of mundane kinds of, of responses from students. They're very serious. Your students were very specific about, "We need to have more, more teachers of color." That's something that everybody across the board said the same thing. That's something that should be implemented, and students had a part of voice in that. So it's not that they, you, you don't do, you can't do everything everybody wants you to do. You try to take that into consideration and look at those things that are practical to do, but sometimes it sparks, you know, the information in, in terms of looking at, listening to, and, yeah, does that sound like a good idea, or can we do that? Or maybe not.
I think Rebecca, that we can add that as part of our board question, if we want, when we get to that point.
Okay.
I think that's a valid question.
Thank you.
Are you, did you have anything else? Um, no, I'm just, Rebecca, did you have anything else?
Oh, I would just point out, like, that makes total sense to me. I just want to avoid, um, our district kind of has a history of listening to people and then doing nothing about what they've heard, so that makes total sense to me.
And that came out in the survey?
Yes.
Ali?
Yeah, so we're saying students really frequently, and I wanted to specify the age range of students we're talking about, for a district of twenty-seven thousand children. And I would imagine when we're saying students, what we mean is, is high school-aged young people, for the, for the most part.
Middle school and high school.
Middle school and high school. So we're, we're, there's a whole segment about, you know, the majority of our schools are elementary schools. The vast, vast majority of our schools are elementary school. There's a whole entire group of, of young people who it would legitimately be somewhat developmentally inappropriate for them to, to participate in this to the fullest extent. And I think there is a need to acknowledge, when we talk about students, we're talking about kids four years old to eighteen or twenty-one.
Uh, well, thank you. I really identified with Dr. Hill's comment about, we could write about seventy more words and ultimately we want someone to part the Red Sea. Ultimately, you know, during this process, I think all of us are gonna be looking for the intangibles to a good leader. And ultimately, the person stepping into this role will be a citywide leader who will be interacting with another entities of local governments to ultimately improve outcomes for families of color in the city, but also maintain the level of performance that we've seen for some of our other students. So I think with telling good stories, and telling stories about ourselves, you know, some things that I think are really important that we add to the leadership profile are able to rally a group of people around a few set of priorities that we think should really be focused on, being able to take responsibility for things that arise to your desk. That kind of goes in with telling people no a little bit. But, you know, take responsibility and accountability, and being able to build consensus. And that's a really unique person that we're gonna be looking for, and as we develop interview, interview questions, I'd really like to, you know, find some good Madison-specific questions that, you know, can give a sense of where we've been and where we wanna go. Because where we're going is very different from where we've been as a city.
That you might wanna consider. I know that some of you are relatively new on the board. As you find the person you're interested in, you're gonna be talking about, what are the most important things that you want that person to be working on in the first year? That's a discussion between a board and a new superintendent. And you'll determine the priorities based upon maybe even what you've heard by what that person is bringing to the table. So that direction, partnership of that direction, kinda reaches a new level as you get a new person coming in. That's why this process is pretty proactive and positive, because it, it, it's that whole idea of the marriage here, of trying to figure out now, if we have to prioritize, we can't do ten things, what are the most important three things?
Yeah, I think with some of the Madison-specific questions, it's not only asking what they've done before, but giving them scenarios and predicaments of where we're at now.
Yes.
You know, we just had an international news story, and I wanna know how they would respond to that.
Well, interestingly enough, one of the suggestions that we have for your second round interview is to have your, your applicant, your candidate, do a presentation for the board. And you can determine what you want that to be. It can be something that they've already presented, it can be a scenario that you create, and you ask them how they would respond to it. You give them a heads up, you give them ahead of time. And again, you don't wanna make that the focal point of your second round interview, but you wanna make it at least a piece where you can then follow up with questions. So I tell candidates, you know, ten, fifteen-minute presentation, so that they don't suck up all of your time presenting, and then an opportunity for a Q and A relative to that presentation, but you wanna get to some of the other questions that you've designed that are more, a deeper dive into some of the things you may find out or wonder about from the candidate from the first round. So that would definitely speak to being able to have them do those kinds of presentations.
Chris, did you have a follow-up question, and we'll close out?
Um, I just wanted to clarify process from this point forward.
Okay.
Like, it, it sounds like we do have some work to do, not just in terms of actually doing the candidate interviews, but figuring out how, what that process is gonna look like, and what kind of questions we're gonna ask. And I just wanted a clarification about how that was gonna happen.
Yeah, so that's how I was gonna close out. So we, we just got this tonight. The board has an opportunity to review it, okay? This will be on the agenda. I'm not sure if it'll be on Monday's agenda, because I think we got a full agenda, but we may, we may add it on to the agenda for Monday. And so we will talk about more of next steps of process, but it is gonna be an opportunity for the board to bring, based on what you've learned from the packet of information, bring to the board on what your recommendations are, what you wanna add. I, I did hear that maybe, I think from Ali's questions about, and sort of my interest in identifying any gaps of people we still need to connect with. We are a very diverse board. I think that we have the ability to reach certain groups, so I think by looking at this information, I think, I was surprised to see, for example, teachers who conducted the survey was really low. And I'm just curious why that was, and if we have to do more engagement with teachers. But I think that is our responsibility now. They're giving it to us for our review. We can come back on Monday to give our feedback and provide some direction of- We can come back on Monday, uh, to give our feedback and provide some direction of, uh, where we need to go. Now, what do you want from us tonight? Do you need something specific from us tonight?
Let me, um, answer that question kind of retroactively. We do, we will be back on, uh, December fourth to present the slate of candidates, and that's what we've told all the groups. So if we're gonna fool around with that date, we need to let people know, because, again, in this interest of transparency, we've said that after the closing and after we had our, our chance to, bless you, to review them, then we will come back on December fourth.
Okay.
Uh, according to the calendar, and again, this is the calendar that's, um, on the website, your first round of interviews will occur, uh, December tenth, eleventh, and sixteenth, and then on the seventeenth, you will, uh, select your semifinalists. And then, so from that point, you're gonna need to, one of the things you're asking is that, you're gonna need to set the dates for your visit to the city, the day in the district, as well as your second-round interview coincides with the day in the district. The end of the day in the district should be your second-round interviews, and that, again, has got to be scheduled as something that everybody can do. Tonight, and, you know, Kevin's giving you some leeway, but I wanna, I wanna hear what you think about in concept. You, you can continue to add to the piece, but this is our report to you, and you can continue to massage it and work with it, but we want to come back to the community and say, "This is what we saw, this is what we heard," unfettered by the board's discussion and the board's consideration, and you may add some things to it, but that this report in and of itself, uh, should be accepted.
Definitely, um, um, so we just accept it, and, um, it'll be.
Hold up, we have to vote on that.
No, no, just, just a second. I'm not saying that we're gonna do that, you guys, calm down. Um, so tonight, you're asking, you're, tonight, you're asking us to accept it.
To accept the report.
To accept the report.
If I could add to that.
And that will, in this report will be, you know, available.
If, if I could add to that, remember now, if we have a deadline on the twenty-fourth, we need to start working with the people that we think are our top candidates, and if you could make any additions by Monday at the latest, that would be very helpful, and we will share with candidates what the additions you made. But if we have concept approval, we can start tomorrow, and then it, it's if the board, is if it's the board's will. But by Monday, if we had to give you, uh, a hope, we would have it wrapped up.
Great. Kate?
Maybe to very directly respond, um, for me, this report captures our district in a, um, I think, uh, given the complexity, diversity, um, multitude of very strong opinions that we have, I think this, this captures our district very well, and is certainly something that I would feel comfortable using as a, a working concept, as you called it, Kevin, uh, to kind of help to have candidates understand who we are. Um, I think it's, it's absolute, you know, we, we, I'm sure could make it finer point, et cetera, as we keep going, um, and maybe we will, but in terms of just moving the process along and starting to help the candidates understand who we are as Madison, I feel, I feel comfortable using it, so.
Great. Nikki?
I think you've done a masterful job, and therefore, I cannot vote on it tonight for the sake of, I would like to read everything that you give me to give it the fair consideration. You put a lot of work in it. I deserve, I think I should put the same amount of effort into reading your results, therefore, that is why I'm choosing not to at this time.
Okay, um, we are, we are just accepting the report. We are not voting to approve, um, uh, the report. We are accepting the report. I just wanna make that clear.
I just saying, I can't accept right now.
I just have one suggestion on the slide deck, that if you actually meant to say equity on a slide deck, that, that to be reflected, um, whereas, it was, it was written equality, and then you said equity, so if, if you actually meant to say equity to be changed?
I think that the wording was what whoever said that said, and I changed it to equity in my presentation.
Okay, okay. Um, and I would propose that we accept and give three more days. I'd like to make a motion to accept, given that we haven't read, so we're, we're receiving it, we're acknowledging that we're receiving this report. Thank you so much. It seems very comprehensive, and I appreciate also the abbreviated PowerPoint presentation too for, um, accessibility of understanding, and that we are given unto a specific date, which I'm hearing Friday. Or Sunday night. Suggestions, um, I'm, I'm looking, and I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't see. I'm trying to find language here until.
Sunday eleven fifty-nine.
Su- Sunday eleven fifty-nine, uh, for, uh, any future input for us to finalize in reading and, um, and, um, give you feedback on, on the report.
I second that we've received it and accept it.
Okay, um, Rebecca, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, um, you got that? Okay. All right, um, motion passes, so we have accepted the report. It will be available, um, on the internet, um, on our website, um, tomorrow morning, along with the. Oh, tomorrow afternoon, um, and it'll be, um, on, online, and so will the PowerPoint. Um, anything else that we need to cover tonight?
Good.
Thank you, Gloria.
Yep, um, motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Rebecca, your advisory vote?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes, we're.
Aye, okay.
Sorry, I did that backwards. Everybody was packing up, you were distracting me.